Tonight's meeting of the Board of Education is called to order at 5:02 PM, an open session. Tonight, we have no requests addressing agenda items. Let's begin with the retreat. Dr. Droudi?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. President Garza. Thank you all of you for agreeing to an additional meeting prior to a regular scheduled meeting for next week on January 19th. This is, there is an important reason why I wanted to recommend this meeting. I think you and the public will see why after we go through this process. I hope you will find it as valuable as I think you will. The fact is, there is direct correlation between districts and schools that are high functioning with board, school boards that are high functioning. And boards are political systems, and like any political system, it can get messy. If managed and governed properly, it can be a powerful democratic force and support students reach their full potential for learning. Establishing a high-functioning governance team does not happen by accident. It must be cultivated. There are several methods in which Board of Education conducts its business in front of the public. So I'll speak to some of these so that way the public can also understand the difference between this board meeting, which is a study at a retreat versus a normal board meeting. There are several methods a board conducts its business in front of the public. So general reports such as a discussion or study session. When oft, when we often create reports to inform the board about an important topic when no official decision is to be taken by the board. Examples are things like student achievement, facility, updates on facilities, student discipline, instructional issues, and so on. There is no, the content will inform the board without an intent for any kind of vote or anything. On an occasion, we will have a discussion item in which I will seek direction from a school board, and that is what we call a general discussion item. And then lastly, when we are about to take action, the sequence of conversations should really be that you would have a study session, as I've mentioned, and then it, and then a discussion, and then goes into action. Alright? So if you think about that sequence, you would have deliberated several times about a key issue in which you would take a vote on in front of the public. So it also gives time for the public to respond, and when there is opportunity given to them, and also go through a thought process themselves while they're away before they come back and make a statement at a possible board meeting. So we'll speak a lot about some of these pieces because that sequence is, some things are time-sensitive, but what I just described could take months, so we also will have to consider how many meetings we have and so on. So otherwise, you can't really cram everything into one meeting because you're dealing with complex issues, and that could really, that could go into issues. So, so that, that's something that we'll, we'll have to kind of talk about later on in this meeting and revisit accordingly. But I, I will be organizing meetings in that way, so that way we are respecting the public as you guys deliberate in front of the public. Lastly, what I want to talk about tonight is what we call a retreat. Retreat is a form of a study session or a discussion, and this is where the board, the board evaluates itself and sets parameters of how they can conduct business efficiently, and does their own evaluation of how well they're doing. And it's important, and this is where we become high-functioning teams. The other meetings we were talking about are taking care of business, but if we don't have an understanding of how we work together, how to be efficient, how board meetings are organized, to help you be successful in your deliberation, it can often lead to conflict and frustration. That then bleeds into frustration in the community. So, so the retreats, our hope is that we will have four of those throughout the year, and we're going to focus on best practices of a team, roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and the school board. Sometimes we'll talk about performing tat, targets for the superintendent, and which how you can evaluate the superintendent, and then also how we set agendas and how efficient we are with that. So as you can see, these are all about just how we conduct ourselves in an efficient and respectful way of each other and also the public. So tonight is our first retreat of four we are, I hope to have through in the, in the calendar year. And obviously, I'm starting in, in the spring, so this is our first retreat. And we'll probably have another, we're most likely going to have another one in May and June to evaluate how we did along the way. And also for me to express after I go through a journey of communicating with the public and staff and everything about some ideas I have to improve this district, and then also set targets that I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to give you as a recommendation how you can evaluate me in extension, how you evaluate the work. Okay, so, so, so tonight's about setting norms. So when we finish tonight, what I hope to leave with is some norms that we can start using next, at the next board meeting. And in fact, the next, the agenda that is separate to 19th has some of these parameters already. So you'll, you'll see that in the, in the, in the board agenda, in the board's agenda that will be published on Friday. It should help the meetings go much more smoothly with everything I've just got through saying. So with that, I brought in somebody that's an expert in setting a culture for board meetings, and Chris Steinhauser is a good, good peer of mine, friend of mine. He's helped me a lot in Santa Monica to really set some things in motion that really has really supported the district and become a high, high-functioning district. He is known and celebrated for, for created and establishing what Long Beach Unified is as their superintendent years ago. Right now, he, he, and he'll speak, say a little about himself when he introduces himself, but he's one that every, if you, you can read about him in a lot of books, and also a lot of, he's in a lot of conversations throughout the nation because Long Beach is celebrated for being very successful. But as, as I interviewed for this job, I told you, I want, I don't, I not only want to catch up to Long Beach, I want to, I want to outdo them. And, and, and he agrees with that too. He wants the same thing. So, so I want you to, I'm going to introduce Chris Steinhauser, and so he'll help us with this retreat.
Well, thank you, Dr. Droudi, and I'm going to see if I can work this. I have very low tech, so let's see. Yeah, so we move to the presentation. So we go to the agenda slide. So the, yeah. So we're going to do introductions first, thank you. We're going to do introductions first because I don't know everybody. I know Dr. Droudi really well. So if you would start here and just say who you are, your role, and how long you've been here in Bellflower.
I'm Dr. Seale Heslin. I've been here for eight years, and I'm board member.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you.
Amy Stewart. I was born in May, sir, but this is my second month as well.
Nina Armstrong. This is the beginning of my second term. This is the beginning of my fifth year.
And what high school are you in? Okay, great.
Hello, Dr. William Avila, Assistant Superintendent. I've been in the district now six months.
Bonnie Carter, Assistant Superintendent, and I've been in the district over 20 years.
Salem Hogan, Associate Superintendent, and I've been with the district 20 years.
Thank you, and as Dr. Droudi said, I'm Chris Steinhauser, Recovering Superintendent of Long Beach. So I was, I wasn't born in Long Beach. I was actually born in Torrance, California, but I lived in Long Beach. I'm 63 years old, and I've lived there my entire life. I'm going to be very open and transparent because I'm who I am. You, you know me as a former, I was her boss, you know. Yeah, actually, my wife was a teacher in the district for 36 years, and we were kids because she was a union rep. And so, so it was, it was a, it was a great experience. So, but I've lived in Long Beach. I grew up in a port of Long Beach, is, and part of Long Beach is very working-class, poor community, very diverse. My parents both were high school dropouts. My dad was a polio victim. He was paralyzed from the neck down. He lived in an iron lung for almost a year. And fortunately, he, he recovered. But that led to other things that, my mom had two children by the time she was 18, and there were six of us in our family. Okay? So from a really early age, my dad and mom drilled into us that education was key, absolute key. My dad went back when he was 27 to get his high school degree at Wilson High School, which is in Long Beach. He had, I was number three of six, so he, you know, and the first one in my family to graduate with a degree. So other brothers had gone, but dropped out. I went to Long Beach City College. UCLA was my dream school. We couldn't afford it. Went to Long Beach City, went to, transferred to Cal State, got out in four years, you know, two at city, two at state, and went directly. And so I worked from the time I was 16, but I knew that it was important for me that I had been given so much as a kid, I had to give back. And so I started in Long Beach as a teacher. I was very blessed. I became a principal at the age of 30 at the second lowest-performing school in the district. They had really bad test scores, and so my job was to raise them. And I'll never forget this because it's, it's called Signal Hill Elementary. It's a great school. I was just thinking about this today. It was 30 years ago that I was the principal there, and they've gone through six principals, and it's one of the highest-achieving schools in the district, and they've eliminated the achievement gap. Basically, a third of the school is black, a third Hispanic, and a third Cambodian. Long Beach has the largest Cambodian population outside of Cambodia. So, but when I was there, we had, our scores were the eighth percentile in reading, not good. And I'll never forget this because I had a mantra as a teacher and a mantra as administrator that the school had to be good enough for me to put my own kid in. Well, my parents said to me, because we had this huge parent involvement program, they said, hey, Mr. Steinhauser, your kid isn't here. Their kids at Medigamp, which was my home school, which was the highest-performing school in the district. So I went to my wife, who was a teacher in the district. I said, you know, we have to walk or talk. So Edward, who is, who is today a principal at Hughes Middle School, which is our largest middle school in the district, is a tall kid. He's much taller than I am, and I took him out of that school, and he went to Signal Hill. I'm going to be really honest with you. My neighbors thought I'd lost one block. They said, why are you taking your kid out of this school, which is the highest-performing, into the lowest performing? It was the best thing we ever did, and I would do it all over again, and my daughter followed the net two years later because she's two years younger than he is. I was only there for about five months with him as a, as a principal because I was promoted and moved on. But the power of the message to everybody was that, hey, this guy's serious about learning and teaching because he's put his precious gem, his own kid, at the school. So he stayed for five years. My daughter went there for six years, and that was, you know, our journey. So that's where I lived. I was a superintendent in Long Beach for 18 years. You, your board president can tell you all if I'm lying or not. She'll tell you the truth. So, but I, I believe in transparency. I believe in teamwork. I believe that we're about continuous improvement. And someone asked me, they were interviewing me for a book, and they said, what would be one of the criticisms that people would say with you? I would say, I said, they would tell you that I, my expectations were too high, and that I always was driving, 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 driving. I do believe in driving, but I believe in celebrating and having fun too. Because the, and I was sharing earlier with one of your board members, one of my, my personal charges as a superintendent was to sub five days a year in the classroom. And the best was when I subbed to my wife's class because my wife was in the literacy teacher. And I would say, they go, Mrs. Steinhauser, Mrs. Steinhauser doesn't do it that way. I go, well, today, Mr. Steinhauser is a teacher, and we're going to do it this way, you know, so. But the beauty is, we have the greatest profession in the world, and, and it's the most challenging. And what people don't understand sometimes is all the stories that we have behind us. All of you have a story behind you. All of our children have a story behind you. And I'm not sure how Bellflower works, but in Long Beach, Long Beach is the largest employer in the city. Okay? So like when I was a kid, McDonald Douglas was the largest employer. Had 50,000 jobs. That's how Lakewood was formed, you know, in part of Bellflower. In fact, my wife's family, my wife's, her parents immigrated here in 1957, and they lived in Bellflower for several years. They're Dutch immigrants. So my wife is number seven, first one born in the United States, so her and her sister were the first ones born here. And then they, they moved to Garden Grove. And so, so she sees it, you know, she was a second language learner, so she, you know, and first in her family to graduate. So it's about social justice. It's about how we all work together. We have many stakeholders. We have the boards as stakeholder group, our kids, thank you for being on the board, your important student voices, our classified employees, our parents, our teachers, and the community. And since in Long Beach, we're the largest employer, it's this whole thing about, you know, you have to work with, in Long Beach, it's a thousand small businesses. Because we don't have any big business anymore. And, and I'm going to talk, I'm going to share some videos with you. We're going to go over some norms. And we're going to do an activity, and you're probably going to think this is really silly, but we'll talk about why it's important to do this activity because, and then like Dr. Droudi said, we're going to have two outcomes today. One is that we're going to review some of what I'm going to call Board Operations Board 101. Okay? I did give the board and staff a copy of this book. It's called What School Boards Can Do. It's written by Don McAdams and Rod Page. And if you remember, Rod Page was the Secretary of Education. He was a board member in Houston, who then became a superintendent in Houston. And it's, it talks about urban schools. We take urban schools out. It's any school system because we all have the same challenges. And then this other one down the road that you may want to get is called The Governance Core. And this is written by a gentleman by the name of Davis Campbell, who was a, is a former board member, and Michael Follin, who people know as the guru in systems, because as Dr. Droudi said, it's about systems work. So like in Long Beach, I had 84 buildings, 84 buildings with 84 different cultures, but we all have to work for the same outcome. So one school may have huge challenges, and another school may not have as many challenges, but we're all working toward that outcome. It wasn't, you know, people, no one got off the hook. Everyone has a climate and a culture at the school. And where that climate and culture starts is with the governance team in the district, to be really honest with you. And so this is, is another one, it's more of a case study type where you can have examples. This one is going to talk about different things, and you'll see it in the, in the agenda. And then the other outcome is, we're going to come up with what I'm going to call Norms/Rules of Engagement. Okay? Because it's really important for people to understand as a governance team, how do we communicate with one another? How do we communicate with our stakeholders, our schools, and this is both this vertical and horizontal relationship. I'm a CSU trustee, and, and I'm going to tell you something that's interesting. 25 board members. Okay? It's huge. And you talk about political, the governors are trustee, lieutenant governors are trustee, the secretary of education's a trustee, so, and the assembly speakers are trustee. So it's very, very interesting, and we only meet every other month for two days at a time. So, and then we do have board retreats, like Dr. Droudi said, and we just had a board retreat about two months ago. And so the information that you'll see in the slides in a minute are going to be, some they're going to be taken out of this book, some out of this book, and some out of the book, the retreat that I just had myself as a trustee. Because the rules of trusteeship and governance teams are the similar. There might be a few nuances between like higher ed and public ed. We in higher ed have to follow under an act. It's not the Brown Act, but it's a different act. It's called the Bigley Act. And so there's these open meeting laws that you have to follow. I'm the chair, for example, at the CSU trustee. Last year, I was the chair of the Ed Policy Group, and you know that we, one of our big things that hit the national news was that we dropped the SAT as a requirement. You know, you can still take it, but it's no longer a requirement as part of the index. Huge issue. Okay? And now this year, I'm the chair of the Collective Bargaining Group. And it's very interesting, collective bargaining is done a little differently at the higher ed than it is done at this level. So you can see, we're going to do a warm activity. We're going to have some videos, and we'll connect those. One of our outcomes is going to be this Rules of Engagements, and then there'll be some issues of where do we go next? I want you to think for a minute because I'm going to ask you to do it in a few minutes, but not right now. I want you to think. I'm going to give you some think time. I want you to think of what's working well in Bellflower Unified. And some of you will only have a couple of months to, to say that, but you know, no, no matter if you've only been here for a couple of months, you came here for a reason, so as a, as a parent or as a community member. So whether we've been here two months or, you know, multiple years, we have ideas of what's working well. And then this is what we call the plus, and then the delta is what are opportunities for growth? I'm a firm believer that there's always growth. I believe in continuous improvement. No matter how good we get, we can get better, you know? And this is a marathon. This is not a, a race. Okay? This is a marathon. I love the phrase, go slow to go fast. And, and I'm going to say something, and I hope, and again, I apologize if I offend anybody upfront, you know, because I tend to do that, because I have really strong biases about public education. So, but if I offend you, I apologize and push back, and this is going to be a dialogue. But I want you to think about what's working well and what's not working, what we'd like to see better so that we can grow together. Because no matter how good we are, we can always get better, you know? It's like if you remodel your house, by the time you painted the first room five years ago, the house could be painted, you know, and so it's, it's the same thing. So we're going to go here. So some norms, I hope everybody can live with these norms for this meeting right now. I want everyone to be present. I want you to be curious. I want you to be positive. I'm a big believer in positive attitudes. I want everyone to participate. I want people to be vulnerable, and, and, and that's a very personal thing. So you can only feel vulnerable as you feel, you know, to be honest with you. And a real important one is, we can't judge people. We can't judge. Everybody has a right to their opinion. We don't have to agree with it, but we must respect it. Okay? That's really, really important. So does anyone have any objection, or would they like to add one? Because we can also add. Is it okay for the norms?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, now, this is where you're going to think it's silly. Okay? I'm going to have you number off in a minute, and we're going to do a team-building activity. Okay? So you guys get to see, maybe I'll use you as a judge. So I believe in fun, and are they, can they participate?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So what we're going to do in a minute, we're going to count off, as a good teacher, I'm going to do some checking for understanding. Okay? We're going to count off, and we're going to probably three teams. And then we're going to build, build the biggest cup tower that you can without using your hands. Okay? And so I see some eyes going, how are we going to do this one? Okay? So, and the first team to use all their cups and/or to build the tallest tower in five minutes is going to win. Okay, so I'm going to pass out some materials in a minute. And I've learned, I've done this probably 100 times, and I always have to make sure I, I explain myself and clarify because adults like to, you know, push the rules. Okay? So the rule is you can't touch your hand except for you can't touch to take the cups out. Obviously, you've got to take the cups out. So each bag already has 15 cups in it, and you're going to have some string. Your hands can touch the string, obviously. That's not a problem. Okay? So, but your hands can't touch these cups. Can't happen. The idea is to build, to use all the cups and to build the tallest tower in five minutes. I'm going to tell you something. The group that's gone the fastest has been two minutes and 49 seconds. Okay? That's the fastest I've had at about 100 times. Okay? It's going to be silly. It's going to be fun, but I think you're going to see something in a minute. So I'm going to number you off, and then I'll tell you where we're going to, because some people are going to have to move on.
You're going to have to do some technical stuff, right?
Are you okay? Okay, I like to bring everybody involved. Let's have some fun. So you're going to be one, two, three. One, two.
Three.
Two, three. One, two, three. Now, wait a minute because people are going to have to move. Okay? Threes are going to be here, so you get to this space, so you guys might want to move some stuff out of the way. We're going to have twos go over there. We're going to have ones go over there. So you take a minute to move your stuff out of the way. I'll move my stuff out of here so we don't have any trouble.
Always forget what number I am. As soon as I say it, I forget.
Now, when I pass these bags out, you cannot open until I say go. Okay? Because this is all about fairness. Okay, you guys can move wherever it might be. Yes, clarifying question over here.
I don't know. I don't think Salem is for being there. She's smiling. She know how to do it.
Now, remember, non-judgmental.
So you said, do we have to use the string?
You don't have to use the string. The string is a tool for you to use. You do not have to use the string. Great question. Okay? The other part is, I'm going to clarify this. You just reminded me of something because in Santa Monica, I had to reaffirm this. So you cannot use your hands. These are your hands. Okay? So, so from the wrist to the hands may not be used. Okay? That cannot be used. String does not have to be used. Hands are here, from here to here. All right? So, I hope this can move this out. First, before we get started, I want to make sure everyone's ready. So is everyone ready? It's all for fairness because it's a time test. Okay, so I see everyone ready. Go.
Be careful how you set them down. Someone, someone start on the next one.
I don't know. I don't know. I feel like the string is. There we go.
Once you get two, it gets. What if we use someone else?
Yes, yeah, you can do that, right? This one's stuck, Chris. Here, you need, I need your wrist. Okay, let's start. Start leaning them out. Yes, the tallest. Oh, no! We need one up here. I still feel like we can go on. Okay, don't let it.
That's good. That's good. That's good. There you go. I think we got something here.
And then we can turn it over and do the other one?
I don't think you can keep doing that.
Well, can we do this? Chris, come on. Oh, yes. Yeah, but we need to get it on top of that one. We could. Well, that's what they're doing. Stop cheating. Elaine's cheating. It has to go upside down.
Our is taller than your brother.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. But then that, that has to be the last one on the top. That would have to be the last one. Unless. You can also, you can do this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, give me cheer. Give me cheer.
I remember I can toss one somewhere. It's good right now.
They're going to knock me over, right?
Yeah, have my right to. Just cut flat shoes. This one alone. There's some more. Dang it, we probably should have went three, huh?
What do you mean, three?
I think we should keep on doing that.
Yeah, let's try it.
I would just think you want to do that. I would just think you want to do that.
I don't really need it, come on. There we go, there we go.
So we got you upside down. I'm gonna stand up from the chair.
It's okay. Okay, go ahead.
I said, let's cut it off.
I don't think we can do it, sorry, guys. We're not gonna win if we don't stop.
So, if we could put the cups back in, the strings back in the packet. Okay, so this is group two here, excellent. Okay, so, why do we do this activity? Why do we do this?
Teamwork.
Teamwork, hey. Yes. What did we learn, and what were some of the strategies that people used? Just shut it up.
We didn't use our hands, but we could use our arms, thinking outside of the box.
You asked, do we have to use the string?
Yes.
And the answer was no. We saw people get up on the chair to do it, really, really important. I saw teamwork of people steadying the tower as you did it. Everyone, and what was the beauty, just like in a classroom, people started with their own mindset. We saw people take on the role of, for example, I'm gonna call facilitator captain, who is saying, you know, do X, do Y. We saw people saying, hey, over there, that looks, something looks like it's working really, really well, I wanna do that. That's the power of learning, that's the power of innovation, that's the power of our great nation that we live in. And the reason I have people do this is because learning should be fun, okay? Being a board member should be fun. Being a member of the staff should be fun. It's, everything should be fun. I don't know about you, but I personally learn and enjoy life better when I'm having a good time, okay? And I loved being a superintendent for eighteen years. I did not retire because I was burned out, or I was tired. It was very selfish. I had two board members who were retiring after sixteen and seventeen years, I knew they were going to leave. And I felt strongly that I owed it to them, because they had been on the board for, and board members thank you, because it's a huge job, that I owed it personally to them to be able to select a new superintendent. You know, I, to be honest with you, if they weren't gonna retire, I probably would still be over there causing trouble for Long Beach Unified. So, because I love my job, I love being a superintendent, I love that piece. So, I do this because we do have to drive hard, our children deserve the best, and sometimes we have to have difficult conversations, to be really honest with you, and data has to drive these conversations, so when things aren't going well, we have to admit they're not going well, and how do we rally to make them move ahead? You know, that's really, really important. And it's important because it's not just your district, it's your city, it's your business leaders, it's everyone coming together. And so, so I do believe in healthy competition, and I believe in rewards. So at the break, the team over here, number two, you get to choose, and I do believe in choice. My wife believes I give too many choices in life. So, a big candy bar, plus, I'm a big Starbucks guy, so you get Starbucks. Or if you don't like that candy, there are different choices of chocolates, and so you may share. However, I also believe that you gotta be worried, everyone, for being a good participant. So, everyone is gonna get a healthy snack, I think, because you may need it as we do this meeting down the road, so we... Alright, thank you, sir. So, I want to keep both tenants in mind as we go to our next activity, and this is gonna be a video. So this is really important, and this is gonna ask you what your why is, okay? It's also gonna talk about, in this book, the theory of action. So why and theory of action are the same thing, alright? So, and if you don't know this gentleman, he's a great speaker, and he's gonna share with us.
We are teachers at the high school level, and we are wondering how the golden circle relates to public education. We see many connections and want to improve the culture and climate of our school. Great question. So, remember, a company is a company, it's a group of people. The fact that it's a business is just a legal structure, but it's the group of people who come together in common cause. A hospital, a school, it's all the same thing, it's a group of people who come together in common cause. And the why of the school is extremely important to understand, because not all schools have the same cultures. As a teacher, you know that. You've worked in different schools, and depending on what the leadership is, you'll have a very different culture. Universities are the same, just because there's two highly rated schools that you wanna send your kids to, for example. The reason we go visit them, and the reason we go on tours, and the reason we do our research, is because we also wanna understand the culture of the school, because we want our kids to be good fits in the culture, so they more naturally thrive in that culture. And that's really, really important. So a school is the same, a school has a culture, and we want to articulate the why of the school. So what ideally we want to do, is if there is a, if there is an origin story of the school, you wanna go back to that origin story. If there isn't, if you have good leadership, then we wanna know the why of the principal, the administration, the administrator. Or, there's another way to do it, you can find out what the, there's a, if you go through the why discovery process, you can get to the why with a group as well, different conversation. But yes, we wanna articulate the why, and just like a company, we wanna write it on the walls, we want it at the beginning of announcements, we wanna give awards to both teachers and people who work in the school, and students, for people who are upholding, advancing the why and upholding the values. You treat it like any other, it's got marketing, it's got incentive structures, you wanna hire teachers who believe in the why, you say, this is what we stand for, do you think you'd like to be here? And then you have all the different personality types, all the different diversity, all of the people who come to a school and make it wonderful and fantastic, and bring that cause to life. It works exactly the same way. You can replace the word company with school in the book, start with why, and it will read perfectly fine.
Okay, so this is, he has a book called Know Your Why, and if you think about Southwest, now, you gotta think, what just happened to Post would happen. Southwest was one of the most invaded airlines around. The whole goal of their why was to get people in and out as fast as possible. Now, they just had a big snafu. So now, now Southwest is really gonna have to revisit that why, because they broke one of the golden rules of the why, trust. Because they really, you know, they canceled sixteen thousand flights. And so now, you've heard people who are diehard Southwest people saying, I may never fly Southwest again. So Southwest is gonna take a hit, but they're gonna rebuild, because they truly have it ingrained in their culture to be the best ever they do. Nordstrom's is another company. Nordstrom's, what's the mantra of Nordstrom's? Everyone know what it is? The customer's what?
Right.
Always right. You literally can return a pair of shoes after you've worn them for a long time, and they do not ask questions.
Why don't you start shopping there?
Yeah, so, now, you don't wanna violate the good things, but the thing is, I want you to take a minute, and Dr. Dredy may ask you to move over here. So with your, with partners, I want you to think, what is the why of Bellflower Unified School District? What is that big why that we're, you know, that you're working on, that you would hope that the person around their kitchen table, around coffee, talking with their neighbor, would understand what the why is about Bellflower, okay? So what is that big why we hear about? So if we take about three minutes, three minutes, and then we'll share out. So if people can discuss with your elbow partners around here, groups of two or three, however you wanna do it, it doesn't matter, but just share what you think the big why is.
I would say empowering the church to eventually take over. Keeping it here, while it be here. Otherwise, cultural Bellflower is the kids' parents', and the kids don't come back.
Creative sense of community and pride, that makes students want to stay here.
Where do you think it is now? How does that, where do you think it is now?
I think there's a gap in performance, academic performance.
I think some communities are more likely to, from the community once they need some level of success. So there's a...
It's got strings.
Actually, I started building relationships really quickly. And I moved to Santa Monica, when I was the ADA coordinator there. And I liked more of our here of Bellflower, that community connectedness. Like he said, it used to be really high Dutch, all my neighbors were Dutch, and I started really connecting more with that culture too. And I connected more with the city council.
I think what appears to me is I've been trying to survive with this, like...
No, I've been here since nineteen ninety, working in the consultant.
Why do you want to use the graph?
Same thing, I hate it. I've been here for a little while, sixteen years.
Sharon is.
At all, I'm kicking and screaming, and, you know, joining, listening to the high school, making connections, and step around, and... Different organizations like the Brother Club, the Chamber of Commerce, and you learn these connections, and that thought of like starting from scratch somewhere else, just feels like a lack of, you know, waste of time, and that's...
We talked about, we really need to, um, grow these students, because the students of the community now, they are our future. They're the future of our community, and they're actually architects, because we're gonna get old. And they are here, gonna be our leaders, so we really have to invest in them, because we want them to lead, and we want them to stay here. And then if they don't stay here, of course, if they, if they, you know, we don't want this to be a disaster, we want this to be... We need to grow leaders in all areas.
Chris, I need you good at that.
About thirty more seconds?
To grow our children for the future, so that we can, in a sense, uh... Yeah, we need leaders for tomorrow.
Okay, if we can wrap up our conversations. Who would like to be vulnerable and share with us what they believe the why is? Because remember, this is draft, this is all draft, this is all step one, okay? Who would like to share?
Well, we came up with investing in the students to commit to stay in the community.
So, investment to stay in the community, okay? Is that, is that, is that an aspiration, or do you think that's right now? Aspiration, okay. Chris?
To teach and protect the future.
To teach and protect the future, okay. Is that an aspiration, or do you think that's no?
That's like a, the teach, teach the future is a definitely continuous thing, but to protect the future, that's kind of like the macro mission.
Anybody else wanna add to it?
I mean, honestly, we just said the same thing, typically, the students, and making sure that, you know, they're educated and informed, because they're gonna be working for us one day, and they're gonna be voting one day, and so we just want them to be informed as educated as possible.
Absolutely, and this is very selfish, you know, I'm a retired person now, so I want, I pray that I get to live a few more years, but I want to live in a society that's gonna take care of me, okay? And I want people to be well-educated and to make the right decisions about voting. And when you, when you have a why, and this is kinda unfair, because the issue is, this is a continuous improvement process. Even in Long Beach Unified, where the why truly is about college and career, about, you know, you've probably heard about the Long Beach Promise, which is like, you know, throughout the nation, and it says, we're all going to work together, the three groups of institutions, so the K-12, the Community College, the higher ed, the city, and the businesses. There's a signed document that everyone does, and I have to tell you, it wasn't easy to start. People have to put their egos aside. In fact, if you go back, when we first started this in nineteen, well, actually in two thousand two, when we first, no, nineteen ninety-two, when we first started this, we actually were locked in a room for three days in Huntington Beach, at the Huntington Beach Hilton, and it was brought about by businesses, because back then, we lost about forty thousand jobs in a two-year period, massive flight from the community, gang warfare, it was a mess. I mean, I'm just being truly transparent. And so the business leader said, in order for our community to thrive, I've heard that several places, in order for us to survive, we all have to work together for the common good of our kids, so that people will stay here, they'll live here, and they'll take care of us in the future. And I have to tell you, the promise of today is so much better than we had started with, because back then, we called it seamless education. But the promise of today truly is a promise that says, if you're willing to do X, Y, and Z, they're gonna do that. And that means bringing all stakeholders together, so I'm gonna pass this out in a minute, but this was one of the outcomes as we went through this continuous improvement. So about ten years ago in Long Beach, we developed what was called the graduate profile. What meant, when our kids left us in high school, Long Beach has fourteen high schools, what will they be able to do, both in college and career? We weren't gonna trap kids, we weren't gonna move kids, it was, you're gonna have your choice, and in Long Beach, there's forty different pathways, kids choose their pathways, all this business, but they're all aligned, and so, and it was college people coming together, business people coming together. And one thing we learned really fast was in Long Beach, that we could do really well with the academic, and SEL, and all that kinda stuff, but what we couldn't do really well on was, we needed assistance on the career tech piece. So for example, one of the goals that we had was that all juniors and seniors who wanted to would have an internship or apprenticeship, okay? But we couldn't do that, we just didn't have, that's where the city came in, the businesses came in, like the Port of Long Beach and others. And then, we went, because we had a thousand small businesses, businesses said, we'd love to have an intern, but we can't cover it under our insurance. So we said, uh-huh, the district has insurance, and we said we could do it. So it's those things are breaking down, so now, literally today, there are thousands of kids in internships, in the district office, in the research office, in the classified unit, all through, it's amazing, once you give the kids, you know, what they love to do. I'll never forget one, right before the pandemic hit, that summer before, we had moved to a one-to-one device in the district, when we were decommissioning about twenty thousand homebooks and sending them home to the kids. That was all driven by our students, we had about twenty interns, and they cranked those things out in record time, that they got the new ones out, they got the old ones out, and they, because they were thinking very differently than we as adults were thinking, so... So, so I share that with you because when you, when you, when you talk about your why and Dr. Droudi takes you, it takes a while to develop that. Because what you want the why to be so simple that everybody understands what it means. So what does the Long Beach Promise mean? It means you get X, Y, and Z. It means that Long Beach Unified's gonna do this, the city's gonna do that, Cal State's gonna do this. You know, people call me all the time and say, hey, Chris, you know, you're a trustee, you're the former superintendent of Long Beach Unified, can't you get my kid into Cal State Long Beach? He has, you know, forty-four hundred index. I go, no, because uh, they're taking every single kid from Long Beach Unified who, who did it, cause that's part of the promise. I mean, and they're up to about fifteen to seventeen percent of the incoming class. So, and you guys actually are part of that, cause you're part of the service area. So what you wanna do is, how do we break all those things down for everybody so that everybody has those opportunities? Whether it be dual enrollment, whether it means an internships, but it's involvement of all stakeholders. The kids, the teachers, the board, the business people, the city, everybody. And I'm gonna tell you, it's something you revisit all the time because you say, what's working well? Like for us to do the um, the um, the apprenticeships, it took us about two years to really get that hammered out. Because there's technical things that, that you have to do. Cause the, because what happens is that, and I'm just gonna use Long Beach as an example, Long Beach doesn't have a large private school enrollment. There, there are twenty-three private schools, and when I was a kid in Long Beach Unified, the private school enrollment was ten percent of the district population. That's in nineteen sixty-three, I entered kindergarten. Okay? So I'm Catholic, people assume my kids went to Catholic school, cause I was on the parish council, they went to public school, cause I, that was the, public school's the best, in my opinion, you know, for kids. So the issue today, Long Beach Unified has about a five point six percent um, private school. It has two charter schools. And if you look at big urban school districts, like in San Diego, there's thirty thousand kids in charters. It's huge number of kids. So when people see that they're involved, when they see they're part of the process, and I'm gonna use those big words of trust and transparency. We have to be honest about the good, the bad, and the ugly, and where we wanna go. So if we have aspirations, how are we getting there? How are we as a, as a governing team getting to that piece of it? I'm gonna share two more videos with you. If we go to the next one, one is about great schools, uh, and this one's about teamwork.
Nineteen eighty-six, Steve Jobs was forced out of Apple and bought a small company for five million dollars. That company was Pixar. And he stayed Pixar's CEO until two thousand six. During that time, Steve Jobs taught us valuable lessons about the difference between good teamwork and bad teamwork. You see, in two thousand, Pixar was moving offices, and they had plans to build three separate offices, one for computer scientists, one for animators, and one for Pixar executives. When Jobs learned about the plans, he scrapped it immediately. Why? Cause he knew the entire Pixar team needed to be together, to have one big space and a meeting place right in the middle. Because he knew that great teamwork requires connection. See, every team's gotta figure this out at some point. This is how teamwork goes. That everything goes great until it doesn't. And then what? When things get hard, you're losing the championship game, the, the business stops making money, your marriage is strained. That's the true test. Cause every team reaches that moment and they never expect to. So the difference between good teamwork and bad teamwork is defined not when things are easy, but when things get hard. That's when great teamwork comes down to these three things. First, during the tough times, do you drift apart or stay connected? It's a critical distinction. Steve Jobs knew how important that fork in the road can become for a team. He knew there'd be tough times. So his answer, stay together. We build our office to always be connected. Good times or bad times, we're gonna keep running into each other. We're gonna keep figuring this out. The Chicago Bulls dynasty lost many times before they finally won. The difference was they stuck together during the bad times. They didn't drift apart. They fixed the problems because they didn't run from the problems. FC Lyon, the amazing women's football team, perhaps the most successful team in the world right now, needed to break through before they went on to win seven titles in ten years. When things get hard, grow together. The second key between good teamwork and bad teamwork is trust. For years, Google ran some internal research called Project Aristotle, which was Google's deep data dive into what makes highly effective teams. And the two top determinants were feeling safe on the team and feeling like others were dependable, was trust. Trust that my voice will be heard, that it'll be valued, it'll be appreciated, and at the end of the day, we'll get our work done. Teams aren't always the happiest groups. They don't always make life easier. In fact, oftentimes, they make it harder. But when push comes to shove, a good team trusts each other, and everyone has a voice. Think about the best leader you ever worked for. Their bar height was high. Work wasn't easy, but it was fulfilling. You had a role, others had a role too, and at the end of the day, everyone could trust each other. And that trust is so vital because of the third key between good teamwork and bad teamwork, that teams plateau before they peak. The foundational research into teams was really clear on this point. People like Bruce Tuckman and Timothy Briggs back in the nineteen sixties and seventies figured this out. Teams have a natural plateau. They get together, they start figuring things out, then their performance starts to normalize and level. And not the level they could be capable of, but at a natural threshold. And to reach their peak performance, in order to break through that threshold, teams need some kind of leadership to push the bar up. That's a big part why leadership matters. Now, that leadership can come in lots of different forms, a motivational breakthrough, a moment where people rally, agitating people out of autopilot, something like that. But oftentimes, that leadership doesn't come without some pain, without some discomfort. And if you don't trust each other, when you try to break out of that plateau, you simply break apart. Think about the years of hard work before the success arrived. That's the difference between hitting the plateau and reaching the peak. It takes the foundation of trust, then the leadership to push it. Think about Sheryl Sandberg at Facebook, or think about what Steve Jobs brought back to Apple when he rejoined. That push from plateau to peak. It's the fundamental law of teams, that everything goes well until it doesn't. And then what? That's when bad teams unravel and good teams rally. So don't get caught off guard. You know that these teamwork challenges are coming, whether you're facing them now or not. So build a structure to stick together. Build trust at every moment, even when you don't think it matters. And foster leadership that will push you from a plateau to the peak. That's good teamwork.
So as you think about what, one of our outcomes today is, how can we build um, rules of engagement and norms? I want you to think about, what would be some items that would help us to build these strong teams? How do we build um, that trust? How do we build those strong foundations? Because I'm gonna tell you from a very personal, I'm being very vulnerable here right now. The um, when you have that in that DNA of the team, you can survive anything. So I'm going down in history as the second longest superintendent in Long Beach. The longest superintendent was twenty years, Dr. Logan Stevens from nineteen ten to nineteen thirty-two. Okay? So the average superintendent stayed ten years. I'm number two. So people said, didn't you wanna break his record and go to twenty, you know? I already told you why I didn't do that. But in two thousand eight, what happened in, in the state of California?
Budgets.
Massive meltdown. So in Long Beach Unified, we had been um, deficit spending for probably twenty years, okay? I'm gonna be really transparent. It was about ten million dollars a year. So um, we lost three hundred million dollars in a three-year period. Now, something that's beautiful about Long Beach is that seventy percent of Long Beach Unified's employees live within the boundary of Long Beach Unified. It's generation. When we talk about people staying, generations of people, multi-generations of people have graduated from Paulie Wilson Milliken and so on, you know? So my grandchildren will be third generation, you know? I know people who are fifth generation. So that's the commitment to the people. I will go down in history as the only superintendent who ever laid anybody off. I had to lay off six hundred and fifty teachers for the district to survive. And you probably saw me at that meeting at Wilson, and I cried because I lost ten years, cause I knew that in Long Beach, so many people were partners or spouses and stuff. So I knew that the action that I had to take in order to save the district was going to have major disruption in people's lives. Some people are gonna lose their homes. I go to church in this community, I shop in the community, I live in the community. I can't tell you how painful that was. So as a team, you can see I get kinda teared up right now, as a team, we made a promise, we're gonna stick together, and this will never, ever happen again, no matter what the situation is. So we put in some new structures that we didn't have, to be really honest with you, of how we were gonna build reserves, how, how we were gonna spend one-time money or not spend it. And so when I left the district, I left the district and some people would criticize that I left with too much money, which is okay too. But I left them with a three hundred million dollar reserve. Because we put in a thing that said, we will never spend one-time money on ongoing cost, we will spend money on the needs of our kids, we're gonna be strategic. It's gonna hit that North Star of our Long Beach College Promise, we're gonna use data to decide, and we're never gonna overstop. And so I personally, probably, and, you know, can be criticized for this, got really into the weeds where I actually became the hiring freeze committee. Everything had to come through me because I said, I cannot do this again, I will never do this again. And I share that with you because we survived, there were no board recalls or none of this stuff, and naturally we became better and stronger for it. And you know that achievement during that time hits them the highest levels it ever hit i- in the district's history. I can't tell you how many people who were being laid off wrote me letters, dropped them off at my house and said, we don't hold you personally responsible for this. We know how this is hard, but this is, you have to come together as a team. And I'm sharing that with you because if I didn't have a strong team, I could have easily just said, I can't do this, I can't do this, I can't do this, no matter how, how, you know, much I love the district to, to, to do that. So I want you to think down the, before we close tonight, what are some norms and some rules of engagement that we can practice here that will help us just start to build those structures? You're not gonna build it in a day, it's not gonna happen, but it, over time, it, it will build. Because you want the team, the, the team of the board and the superintendent, as well as the team of your cabinet, as well as all your employees, you know, I mean, that's real, and your parents who are behind you. So what I want you to do right now, um, you have two pieces of um, paper in front of you. You have a green, maybe call it teal, and a, and a bright yellow, they should be in front of everyone's desk. If they're not, we can get you some. I want you on the teal, everyone has some at the table, I want you to write down at least two things that you think are working really, really well here in Bellflower. From your perspective, whether it's a board member, whether it's a board member slash parent, whether it's a staff member. I want you to write at least two things that are working really, really well. And on the yellow, I want you to write some things that you hope you can improve upon. So what are some like, I would call those next steps? What are some things that you would hope that we could achieve here i- in, in, in Bellflower? So take a few minutes in to, to write down um, on the teal, the positive things that are happening, cause every system has a lot of positives. And then on the yellow, what are some of those o- opportunities for growth? If you wanna write more than two, you can, it's up to you. If you wanna write one, that's okay. Um, but once you finish, if you would put the teal on the plus sign over here, that what we call the plus over here on, on to the left of the coffee. And to the right of the coffee, the delta would be the yellow, the, the opportunities for growth. About one more minute?
Hmm.
So I'm just gonna um, talk about the plus side, what's working well. So this one says we have caring staff, good teachers, um, our students benefit from greatly from um, um. Our, 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 sorry, our, our scholars, I mean.
I can read it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said, our students benefit greatly from the. Did I keep reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Our students benefit greatly from our C.A.L.S. program, it's one of the highlights of our high schools. C.A.L.S. is the career technical and teaching program. And it said, we also provide a lot of uh, extra resources for admissions, so you could like dual-merging properties, windows along through City College, if you're a high school student. They have access to the library card, for elementary school, they have dual-merging, the boot program, things together, so there's a lot of, you know, actually.
Hearing from a stakeholder, major, major importance. Good job. Thank you. Okay, dedicated staff, highly educated staff, community involvement, parent involvement. Uh, eager for change, um, small, connected community, great potential. What's working well, we have amazing uh, teachers and staff, we see some things coming through here. We have a, a, a new board that can work together with a superintendent, there's a lot of optimism in our community. Our staff desires to improve student outcomes. This is really, really important, okay? That, that is one of the biggest issues that we have to deal with. Additional support staff to address this uh, social, emotional, and um, wellness of our students. Our community values all our students and our kids, and we want to learn. Again, positive that the eagerness is there, the will is there to do this. Increase mental health and social emotional offerings, uh, supports. Um, uh, continue to expect, expect, expansion of our C.T. opportunities, we've heard how important that is. Because you know, we have to be honest, sometimes school system focused only on the academics and they didn't focus on, cause of all the pendulums swinging back and forth, that type of thing. So um, change and opportunity for um. So, um, change and opportunity for um, uh, innovation and growth. Strong financial um, uh, structure and reserve, that's important. Um, and thank you, because um, you can do so much when you're coming from a strong position. So if you're in a deficit, it's a totally different world. So, uh, dedicated uh teaching staff and dedicated employees. Our maintenance department, um, helping to keep our facilities despite their age, and this is really, really important. Employees and students that are part of both our generations, talking like I said in Long Beach, you know? And my, my youngest, my oldest grandson is going to be in a gap next year, and he's already calling himself a caterer. He's ready to take off in the, in the world after a couple months. Eager for change, um, important piece. So let's go over here on the opposite side. So, and I'm gonna share with you, even a good system like Long Beach, and I'm, you know, really biased about Long Beach. Long Beach has a lot of room for improvement, like any school system, like any business, okay? So we wanna uh improve trust, communication, test scores. Trust, inclusion, civility, how we treat each other. Lack of transparency, wanna improve this, okay? Not everyone is on the same page, we wanna improve that. Support can, uh, support continuing um, uh, training, providing opportunities for growth, transparency. Excuse me, in communication and actions. Uh, enhancing programs and starting to enhance facilities, bringing more resources to help to provide the opportunities. The need to build staff capacity in specific areas, and I heard that over here about grow our own. That is so important, I cannot tell you how important it is. In Long Beach, we have a saying, the Long Beach way. Doesn't mean we're being arrogant, but it truly is about doing it and growing our own. There are actually thirteen initiative development programs, both in the classified and the certificate inside to build your own. And I'm gonna talk about social justice here. So, we had such a deep bench when I was a superintendent, that I was approached by other superintendents that said, Chris, do you have some people you could lend us to? And so we did. So Gordon Grove Rorschwan, who was a superintendent for fifteen years, needed some principals. So I gave her a list of about ten people, and we had an agreement that after three years, those people could come back if they wanted to, or they could stay there. And about half came back and half stayed there. But it's about social justice, because we want all systems to do too well. She didn't have a deep bench at the time, so she had this to grow her own, like you guys have talked about with Chris. Really, really important. Um, the need to build um clear systems, and I'm glad someone used the word system, because the way we grow is about being a system. We can't, how many schools do we have in Bellflower? Twelve. We can't have twelve independent school districts, okay? It's one Bellflower unified, all working together. Define clear policies and procedures, engagements, um, increase morale, build trust, improve facilities. Expectations, providing opportunities, and creating environments where students can rise to the challenge, embracing growth mindset and teacher and student advocacy. So important, I'm gonna tell you something. One day I'm very proud in Long Beach, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I have no problem with that. Um, I think the greatest gift that we have in Long Beach, the greatest street, is our, our teachers. Working together of solving the problem of practice, whatever that problem of practice is. And I'm gonna give you an example. Um, I don't know if you were in the district at the time when we switched to um, when the state standards first came out? Okay, so Long Beach had its own standards, and then we went to the state standards. And then I'll never forget this, at that time, um, we had just moved away from having twenty-three report cards and forty-five elementary schools to run. And the teachers said, you know, thank God, that was crazy. But then they said, you know, Chris, we cannot, I had had these things called teacher councils, that I would meet with the teachers. And they said, we can't give report cards out because we're, we're learning these new standards for the first time. So they go, are you okay if we don't give report cards out this year? We'll still meet with the parents, we'll still do this. Well, you know, some people said, Chris, don't do that. You know, if you don't do that, if you give the teachers this latitude, there's not gonna be any accountability. I said, that's not true, that's not true. So I listened to the voices of the field, and for a whole year, we didn't give out elementary report cards. And it was the greatest thing, because it gave the teachers the power to work together, to understand where these new standards were, and then we rolled it out the next year. But that's that trust and that transparency. I had to trust them, because they're the experts in the field, and they were pushing back on me. And I have to be honest with you, you know why I got the greatest pushback from? Was my cabinet. My cabinet said, come on, Chris, you gotta do it. And the assistant supervisor said, no, you guys are gonna do it. The board was all in on it. And so the parents, we didn't get pushed back from parents, because parents trusted the teachers. We still talked about growth, we still talked about, you know, the needs. But it's that, that's just a small example of what we call trust and transparency. And then the last one over here is, is that uh governing structures, culture, and governance, um, has been less than optimistic. Trust in the community, I know, uh, aging facilities, and declining enrollment. So we saw some things, transparency, trust, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Providing competitive, um, uh. A competitive education, uh, other districts are offering more students, um, to be with, for example, APs and Pathways. And um, uncompetitive for teachers, uh, high turnover, principal turnover. And this is a really important piece, and thank you for saying it. So here we're seeing from a student's perspective. They want more competitive things, for example, APs and Pathways and other things. And they want to make sure that the staff stays here, so that they can do their job. And you know, that's really, and I'm gonna say, you're gonna think I'm crazy, you can do it all. Because I'm proud to say that we worked really hard in Long Beach to, to provide competitive salaries, to provide these things, to live in a physical environment, to, to be really honest with you. So that we didn't lose a lot of students, and that we did offer these opportunities. So for example, one of our big pieces of the board's initiative under the Long Beach Promise was to provide every student. Um, we had to talk about um gatekeepers, so we took away all gatekeepers to AP courses. So anybody could go into an AP course that wanted to, there were no more gatekeepers, with the exception of um mathematics. Because you can't take AP calc if you've never been on that track. Or in language, you're not taking AP Japanese if you don't speak the word Japanese. So, so, and then the board, then the kids, because I had a student advisory group, they said, you know, these tests are very expensive, you know? And it's an equity issue, and back then they were like eighty bucks a pop. So, the district pays for all the cost of the tests except for five dollars. And the reason we don't charge, we don't take care of it all, is from the kids. The kids said, Mr. Stenyanser, if you let them all, if you pay for it all, then they don't have any quote-unquote skin in the game. I'm like, well, this is pretty interesting. And then, some kids said, what about if we wanna challenge the test? So for example, I love physics, but I didn't take the physics, can I challenge it? And this came from the kids. Let a student challenge the test, and reimburse him if they pass it. And so we did. So the district today spends about two million dollars a year on AP fees, because the kids have demanded it. And about sixty percent of the eleventh grade, twelfth graders are taking two-year courses a year. And the beauty of that was, it came from the kids, and it came from the community. And the kids were saying, that's the reason Long Beach is Pathways. The pathway movement in Long Beach came from the teachers and from the kids. So all the high schools now are Pathways, there's forty different Pathways. And everyone is on A G and all that kind of fun stuff, but there is this support. I share that with you because it goes back to that trust, that transparency, and what I'm gonna call that collective efficacy of the stakeholders in, in, in the field. And that's so important for us to do. Now, the other piece is, trust is earned by action, okay? Trust is earned by action. So, I can't go out as a superintendent and say one thing, and come and do another thing, okay? Everyone needs a whole new accountable. So if you look up here, there are three big things that the board is responsible for. The budget, number one. Policymakers, you make policy, you absolutely make policy with the input from the superintendent, but you are the policymakers, you are the, that, that's number one. And I'm gonna argue that the most important one that you have in your life is the hiring or the firing of the superintendent, okay? That is so, so important. And you've just embarked on the most important strategy and did a great job, to be honest with you. So you've got a wonderful superintendent. And, and, and I commend all of you for what you're gonna do, uh, going in the future. So those are the three big things. I'm gonna share with you this next slide, that um, I think I have copies over here. Yes, I do. So then if you could pass these out, these are a little easier to read. This is um, out of the book, it uh, that I shared with you. And this is the, what I would call the magic line, okay? Between governance and management. And one of my board members in Long Beach Unified, his name is John Meyer. He was a board member for seventeen years. He was my high school anthropology teacher and my football coach, okay? So you could imagine, here I have this guy as my, um, my teacher and my coach, and now he's my, my board um, member. Wonderful man. And so, the issue is, the governance on the top line is everything the board is responsible for. The board is, is responsible for developing its core beliefs and commitments. Its theory of action is that why? Reform policies, we've heard about how we want to do better. Policy development oversight, building the blocks of reform governance. What the roles and responsibilities and relationships of the board and superintendent are. Civic capacity, board members are unbelievably responsible for building civic capacity in the cities that you serve. And you serve what, Bellflower, Lakewood, part of ABC?
Ceritos.
Ceritos, okay? So you really have to work with three city governments, as well as their business groups, and transition planning. You've already took care of this first, because you, you're, you're, you're doing that right now. The superintendent and his team, in this case, his team, are the management team, okay? And so where some boards get in trouble, is that some boards develop policy that wanna drop below that line. You, you can't do that. You hire a superintendent for him or her to do that, to carry out of that policy. And the reverse side of it, it's, and you heard Dr. Droudi talk about this. It's important for the superintendent and his team to give you information up this way. Because our job as superintendents is to make sure that we carry out the policies of the board. And that we make sure if there's problems, that we give you, there should be no surprises. So for example, one of the rules of engagement in Long Beach, there would be no surprises. So, a board member in Long Beach Unified would not wake up and see in the paper or the Long Beach Post, something that we had not communicated about. Because, and that went both ways. There would be no surprises from the board, to the superintendent and his team, or vice versa, okay? Because we have to be a team, there should, that, that goes about trust, alright? So the issue though is, this isn't, we are the board meeting in this room, this is your meeting. You're running this meeting. Dr. Droudi and his staff are helping to do the agenda and all that, and preparing it for you. But you are meeting and convening, so that the public, you can hear from the public, and the public, you can listen, um, like Dr. Droudi said about those big initiative changes. So because some of those are gonna take six months, a year, to develop, you know? And I'll give you an example in Long Beach. So, when we were going on our big Y of the Long Beach Promise, well, it's one thing to have a signing in front of the pyramid and to say we're all gonna do X, Y, and Z. That means nothing, if people don't do it in the classroom, it means nothing. So we took a whole year and developed what was called the Academic and Success Career Initiative. And that was to support the um, the, the promise. And what it was is that, we had about sixty to seventy stakeholder members, kids, parents, business leaders, civic leaders, two board members. Because in Long Beach, what we always did was if we were doing a big initiative, whether it be social promotion, or um, something with special ed to change a big policy. We always had multiple stakeholder groups and two board members. And so they would meet on the, it might be monthly, to be honest with you, in these major task force. And then, like Dr. Droudi said, we had four retreats a year, so we would have these multiple retreats a year. And then, we would have the task force come, and, and they were all day long. They were like from eight to four, you know? To be honest with you, they were long days. And so, but the beauty of those days was it was truly a conversation of people saying, we're looking at data, this is where we're going. So by the time it came to the board for it to be voted on for a policy, it had actually gone through multiple iterations. And there was never opposition from the public or anybody, because everybody had opportunities, multiple opportunities, to give input. And, and to change the wording, or to change the action. But, that's important, that is absolutely critical. But what I'm gonna argue is even more important, is what do you do after you do that, okay? So going back to those retreats, we would take that academic initiative, and they would come back, and we would report progress that the board had set up, and their goals and objectives. And we would talk about the data. So all those assessments that you give as a teacher, that are, they give a lot, um, we would report that data up, you know, to the board. This is working well, we're, you know, you just gave us a million dollars to do X, it's, you know, that type of thing. Now, um, and I'm gonna share with you, this was our plan. So Dr. Droudi would just pass these out. So Long Beach had, and Long Beach is actually involved right now to doing their new plan, because it's the time. So, we would do five-year strategic plans. This was the plan. It's very simple. And those goals became the board's goals, the superintendent's goals, and the staff's goals, okay? And I'm gonna share with you what I did. So as a superintendent, and, and, we're President Garza, you know this, so your, your principal is being held accountable to goals. He has to write goals to school plan. His supervisor, who is, is uh, Mr. Moskowitz, okay? He has to write plans. On a regular basis, he would write his goals to me as the superintendent, and then he would come in, in closed session under my evaluation piece, because I'm holding, you know. You're holding me accountable as a superintendent, I'm holding them accountable, and we would share, everybody would share these goals. So it would be the business department, it would be the cafeteria services, so that the board had this unbelievable, clear understanding of what was going on. So by the time when we're doing budget development, as Dr. Droudi said, if we came to the board and asked for a um, an increase of X in something. The board had really good background of why we were doing what we were doing, okay? Because we can't improve the budget unless you give the authority to do so. So it's this two-way street, you set the bar, the team implements the bar with the schools behind it. And that, and, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue something, this is very biased. You cannot ask your staffs of your buildings to do more than two things really well, okay? So I'm just gonna say as a bias, when you do your plans, and you have a lot of rocks to lift up, doesn't mean that we're not gonna focus on everything. But when you're really asking for major change, I'll, I'll use EL students. So if you say that we have to do a much better job with EL kids, then you can't ask them to do EL, X, Y, and Z, like ten different things. Staffs can't handle all these, I mean, for those who teach in the classroom, you know that, that's, it's, it's impossible. So we have to make sure that our mission is clear, that our road is clear, that we're, how we wanna get there. So I'm gonna stop there and, and open up to questions. So what, does this make sense, does this not make sense? Is this something that, as Dr. Droudi just talked about?
Can, can you speak to the cadence of, of meetings? And um, a part of uh, board deliberation, i- i- is obviously, is the medium of the board in front of, but we also have to respect the public in that conversation, which is the whole, comes with transparency. So, so there's a lot of things that we're gonna be bringing to the board in meetings outside of the retreats.
Right.
For, for, for us to make decisions on. And, and so if we are, we have a retreat here, and I have a discussion item to deliberate on, and then possibly like a first reading. And then a second deliberation possibly, with a recommend, with an idea of where we wanna go. And then in action, to, for action to take. It says, let's just say this is focused on, um, make it, we're gonna build X. But we gotta, we gotta study it, have a conversation for everybody to hear, public to have input on. And then, with, come forward with some recommendations for superintendent to ask, to, to, to the board to see whether they approve of the direction. And then in action, which is associated with funding and everything else with that. If we have a cadence, this would take three months to, to get there, depending on how many meetings you have. So speak to this, the cadence of meetings and all that.
So, great, great example. So the cadence is gonna be different for different issues, okay? Some were like Dr. Droudi said, might be a short cadence of three months, where you're gonna have um, a discussion here, then a work session, then come back for a session here. In Long Beach Unified, we had two meetings a month, every other Wednesday. Uh, it was the first and the third Wednesday of the month, there, there was the board meeting, the regular board meeting, okay? If we were doing a big thing like this, we would then add what we would call task force, we called it task force, okay? Two board members were assigned by the president of the board to, to be on that task force, the stakeholder group, and then they would meet, and then at the future meetings, they would bring up those, those issues. Some of those might take three months, some might take four months, some might take six months. In some cases, it might take a year, so let's use a facilities plan. So, I'll, I'll, I'll just. So, I'll, I'll, I'll just give you a great example that just happened. So, Long Beach just passed its third bond, um, and, and since two thousand eight. And I was the co-chair of that, uh, in the, in the private world. That was my, my role, to, to help that bond get passed. So the district had taken a whole year, have done a facilities master plan of what the needs were, meeting it with hundreds of people. To be honest with you, at all the different high schools. What were the needs? They brought that to the board on probably at least three different occasions. Through board retreat, through board meeting. Then the board decided to put a, um, geo bond on the, you know, the ballot late in, um, late June. And then that was for November. And then, it was one point seven billion dollars, you know, it's a lot of money. And then, it, it, it won approval by the voters in, in November. And, and I'm sharing that one particularly with you because this goes about trust. So, since two thousand eight, Long Beach Unified has been able to pass four point four billion dollars in bonds because of the trust of the community. So the community, even, even in this last one, so the first one passed with seventy-two percent, then seventy-four percent. This one passed with sixty-one percent. Knowing that this economic time is very different today. But even at that, the voter said, we trust the district because they're going to do X, Y, and Z. The past practices have been this. And that goes back to what Dr. Dodi said, is that when you, whatever you're doing, whether with the task forces in academic or facilities, when you involve all these stakeholders and you put it through this, this timeline of input, output, input, output. So by the time it gets to you, then you're not going to have a lot of opposition. So, so when we raised, I'll give you another example on the academic side. When Long Beach Unified went to four years of mathematics. So Long Beach Unified has a requirement that all high school kids must take four years of math. It doesn't mean they're going to take calculus. It can be computer science, it can be, you know, a bunch of classes. Basics about qualitative reasoning. We didn't get any pushback from the community because we went out to the, to the, um, to the, the schools and to the parents and to all the stakeholder groups and talked about why this was important. Because our university partners were saying that kids needed this to be successful. And we had about probably four months of meetings. So when we brought it to the board and we phased it in over a four-year period. So it wasn't just you're going to have to take four years tomorrow, that you could take it, you know, the, it gradually went into a, in place. So today, Long Beach Unified is one of three big districts in California to require four years of mathematics. That's not a requirement. And that's really important because UCs require three, but they'll tell you upfront, if you don't take four, you're not coming here. So, and so, so I call it truth in lending. Let's be honest about it. Then the board had to say, how do we make sure that kids are not hurt by this? So in order for the, us as staff, we came on a regular basis and shared about data. We disaggregated the data by ethnicity, by gender, by sped, by EL, to show that no kid got hurt. In fact, all the graduation rates of all subgroups went up. So here we raised the standard and, and, and people said, you're going to hurt kids. We didn't hurt kids because we provided supports along the road for the kids. And that came from the board's direction. So the beauty is, you have to set up a structure that says, we're going to do our regular meeting. And then we have to have flexibility to add these other pieces. And I firmly believe that you calendar it all ahead of time. So you, if you're going to do retreats three times a year or four times, whatever it's going to be. And then once in a while, you may have to call a special meeting. You know, we did that all the time, to be honest with you. We have to have a special meeting to do X, Y, and Z. Because, um, again, it's about going back to the trust and the communication. And, and I'm going to argue that as you're doing this, this feedback, that you use every vehicle at your disposal. Social media, your website, regularly communicate to parents of what you're doing and why. So that people can come here and ask those really hard questions. Said if we're going to raise the bar or do X. So for example, if we're going to tax the, the taxpayer, what, as a taxpayer, I want to know what the money is going to? What's it going to cost? Who's, you know, how are we going to hold ourselves accountable? All these things, and then I'll make my decision, you know? But you, you have to build a structure that has this flexibility that you can go like this. And it's hard, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard.
Just, just to add to that, I know I, I sent you all, uh, something last night. After deliberating and after reviewing the agenda for this upcoming nineteenth. I saw where the problems, where the confusion lies in terms of items that the, the community also needs to read while you read it and understand it. And that deliberations that, that will need to take place before you eventually, you just, you just can't cram everything to consent and hope that somebody pulls it, doesn't pull it. It, it can't happen that way. Because everything he just got to talking about, there's no way you can do that in, in consent. So, it begs, the reason why I'm asking this question is, at some point, we have to figure out, we, we have high hopes for this place. The Long Beach Promise, all of that, we want all of that. There's going to have to be deliberation in the communities. And opportunities for us to then have to do all of that stuff outside, to come back and have study sessions to inform you about the progress of things that's happening. Provide opportunity for public to have input in the conversation. So it's, it's going to be hard. I guess my point is, we, uh, we got, at some point, we have to ask the question, how many meetings are we going to have? And it's not that we want to be here till midnight or two o'clock in the morning, I've seen people do that. So, so it's, it needs, it needs to be efficient to respect your time, respect the public's time. And, and opportunity for everybody to actually mull over the data and information in a transparent way. Uh, before we start asking, start, start moving on some of these initiatives and then ask you for permission to do things. So, we have to consider that.
Yeah. One of the things, if you don't have, uh, uh, like you, you have your bylaws. So for example, Board Policy eleven twenty is ingrained in my head. It's community involvement, it's board agenda development. So there's very clear how the board agenda is developed. The timeline's put out, it's published to everybody ahead of time, all the board retreats, all those things. The only thing that's not on there are the, um, the, uh, special meetings that could happen. And the other piece is, uh, and this goes back to what Dr. Dodi talked about meeting, is that in Long Beach, so the, the board, um, obviously met, but they also sat on two, at least two committees. So, so by the time, so there might be the instruction committee and the budget committee, so they met with staff. That goes to those rules of engagement. There were no surprises, you know? And the, and the whole purpose of that was for those board members to say, hey, this is a question that you need to, uh, um, bring to the whole board, or the whole board may need more information on an X. So, for example, they may say, hey, Chris, we need more information from the instruction department. Can you write a paragraph? And we would write a detailed paragraph and that would go out in the, in the, in the communications that Friday before. So that every board, you know, because they can't all sit on, they would violate open laws. So the issue is that, is those commitments. And then I'm going to, the beauty of the, when you build these structures is, and it, and it's about your time, because you work, you know, you have other jobs that you have to do too, is that, that's why you, you want to look forward to build it ahead of time so you can build with those other structures. And then, down the road, five years from now, I hope you adopt something that, that Long Beach does. And we didn't do it in the beginning. So we have this thing now called board field trips, okay? The board field trip is where all five board members go with the entire exec staff, mine, with ten people. And we would go visit the schools based on one of the initiatives that we were doing. And you probably have had that happen to you. And the beauty of that field trip, I call it a field trip, is because Long Beach is very diverse and big. We would go to every section of the district. We would go to the north, we'd go to the east, we'd go to the south, and we'd go to the west. And the reason we did that, we wanted the board members to say, it didn't matter what part of the city you were in of the district. The expectations were the same. They might be being delivered a little differently because of the craft of the teacher. But the same high expectations were at a school on the far west side to a school on the far east side. And then the other beauty of that was, we would actually have the board members go to trainings. So for example, one time we were doing a writing workshop, massive rollout. And so the board went to those trainings and then they would go visit the classrooms and see if it being implemented. So then when we came for a budget ask, the board said, I get why you want to raise this budget because of this important piece. Because that is bringing great knowledge to the board to, so that they can see what their wishes are, you know, being implemented. And they would, you know, meet with the kids and, and do it. That's down the road issue, to be really honest with you. But the beauty is that you're, you're in the driver's seat. You know, this is, this is the beauty of the governance team. It's not us telling you on this side of this, what to do. You're telling us and we're providing that support. And it's this teamwork going back and forth like this.
Okay, so I, I have a, a question. I, um, it's been on my heart for a while. It's just I've never had a chance to move forward with it because of the many distractions I've, um, encountered in the past. I, I want to bring forth a resolution to the board, to the district, for land acknowledgement. And the reason why I want to do that is because I've been, I, I'm very active with CTA, NEA, and other organizations. Uh, and we do, you know, like you may do to Pledge of Allegiance. We also do a land acknowledgement. And, uh, and, and we do that because we need to make sure that our children understand what, you know, what land they're on. I mean, their place is down in the wetlands in, in Long Beach. You know, you go to dig in and all of a sudden you have a group coming out and they want to know, wait a minute. We need to know what's coming up out this ground because it could be very well a burial ground or whatever. So, my thing, okay, I want to bring forth a res- a resolution. How would that take place?
So that, do you want to?
No question.
Go ahead, do that for us.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I'll, I'll say how it went from us, okay? And then in, in Long Beach. So in the, in the, in, in Board Policy eleven twenty, the way it works is, uh, is that the president of the board and the superintendent, um, develop the agenda together, okay? So, a board member could put a, uh, write a form that said, I request resolution X, Y, and Z. And this is the reason why, blah, 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 okay? It might be simple, but it's, you know, tied to, for example, recognition of a group or whatever. Or it might be more complex, where we might have to do some more work to, to, to understand what the resolution's about. So then, in my case, with the board president, I would get back to that board member and say, we're going to look at this and put this on this agenda at this time, that type of thing. And, and then your particular case, for example, we, um, if you had brought that to me, I might say to you, do you have some background information where we could go to, you know, because we want to make, if we're going to do something like that, we want to make sure it's correct, you know, because you don't want to do something and offend.
So, 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 and, so, so, bless you. So we, I would bring it forth to the president, uh, and the superintendent.
If you had that board policy like we did in Long Beach Unified.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, so I think the bigger question you want to ask is, i- i- anybody wants to bring an item to, uh, for, for consideration for the rest of the board? How, how would that go? Uh, you, you have the right, or even the public.
Yeah.
Has a right to bring anything to the board by law.
Absolutely.
It's up to the superintendent and the board, or board presidents to decide when it is. It could be information item. If it's an action item like that, for example, then within, so obviously we look at it because we, uh, the request is there. It's not for me to decide whether this is going to get approved or not. It's for me to, uh, uh, I have the ability to talk to every board member.
Right.
To then say, this is important, uh, uh, this is something one of the board members brought forward. And what were your thoughts on this piece and all that? Because the last thing I want to do is put something for approval and there's a fight in the community, uh, out there. So, so we would have advantage point enough to say, was everybody, is this, if it's a word called nothing burger, meaning, nothing burger, meaning it's not, it's not anything we're going to have conflict about. And we, from the community or the rest of the board, it could be something that, that's simple, it's celebratory, but obviously, if you, if you have something like that and all of a sudden you, I don't know the politics of this place. It could be an issue, somebody's going to be able to tell me that.
Right.
And then, that goal is then to say, uh, if there, and talk to the board members, are we actually interested in doing this or not? And then, if they tell me yes and I count the votes, uh, yes, if it, I, I will always try to get to a five oh. But if I feel like, ah, this is going to be tough, three, two or something, then, and I, I would know clearly, okay, we're going to, the board president, eh, we're going to, we, we need to put this up for a vote. And then, and then it, we just have to see where it lands with people and all that. But at least at that point, uh, I would need to, uh, understand the landscape and all that kind of stuff to be able to prepare you all for a, a, a good deliberation.
So it's really important when you, when you, Dr. Dodi's hit it right on. You, in your bylaws, your, what I call your board policies. So you need a structure on how you, you do these things. Because by law, any member of the public can request something. And so for example, in Long Beach, we, we added something to that. So for example, we said that if something was voted on and was voted down, it couldn't be brought back for, until another year. Because what you don't want, because remember, this is your meeting in the public, not the public driving the meeting, okay? The public has input, the public has a right to, to agendize items. But it doesn't have a, a right to clog the, the business of the district. Because you have to do the business of the district. And some of these things are going to be simple, others are going to be longer. Like so for example, when we adopted a resolution, what we called all in for everybody, you know, all means all. That took about six months. It was a special ed, um, resolution. And it was very detailed on what all means all. And so that was really about equity and about all this stuff. The district has now taken it one next step and adopted an equity policy, which it took about a year, to be honest with you, with involvement of about a hundred people. So the issue is, um, and that equity policy was voted on a four to one. And it wasn't that the board member who voted against the policy was against the equity. He was against some of the wording in the equity, uh, of the policy, okay? The resolution. So the issue is, like Dr. Dodi said, some are going to be what I'm called easy peasy. You know, they go this way, others are going to be, uh, longer. But it's really important when we do these types of things, that we do it the right way. So that when we do bring something to the table, that we don't offend the group that we're actually trying to honor, you know? Because the, um, you're exactly right, I live by the university. So, and I walk there, you know, five days a week. And there's certain pieces of that property you cannot dig on at all. And so, the deal. So that's a great example of how the board needs to come up with, with the superintendent of these policies of how you're going to do your business, so to speak, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Very, very important.
And, and, and like I say, today is a, a, a kickoff to do more of this conversation. We're going to continue to deliberate on this. You have access to all your bylaws and, 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 I'm going to, I'm going to try, I'm, we, we're going to try our best to be efficient with this meeting. But there will be another thing I'm going to introduce about something called the Friday memo. Uh, it is a, 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 like a newsletter that goes strictly to the board about this stuff that's, that's happening. And, and, and sometimes you may request some information about something that may end up in the Friday memo. And then, and then, uh, for example, if something like that comes up and I, I've deliberated with board members, I may communicate back in the Friday memo that says, um, this is, this is the research we've done. And this is the considerations if we're going to bring this policy. The Friday memo is a good information, uh, for, for us to communicate on without having to break any kind of brown act or anything like that. So, uh, so there are things, so that way we don't get clogged up in a bunch of stuff, so.
That's a great example of what we, we just talked about, one of the items that we'd love to, to agree at the end, like rules of engagement. One of them that we had in Long Beach was that everyone would get the same information. No board member would have more information than another board member. That we were all going to be on the same page of this stuff. And that is really on this gentleman's responsibility, to be really honest with you, to, to do that. So that, that, you know, um, because that's real important. Communication goes back to trust. Because if you think that I'm not giving you as much information as I'm giving these two board members, you're not going to trust. You're going to have some doubt. And we, we can't have that. So if you brought me a concern, I'm going to share that concern with everybody. Because it's the, you know, really important on both sides that, you know, no surprises, open communication, and timeframe. And, and there might be things at the board, um, in the board meeting where a member from the public comes and, and it's an item where it's not on the agenda and it's a valid point. And, but Dr. Dodi can't address it because it's not, you can't address it. But you may turn to him and say, at a future meeting, we would like X, Y, and Z on this point here. Because, and that holds him publicly accountable because he's now this, whatever it is, you know? Been told publicly that his bosses want communication back. It doesn't mean it's going to be communicated in the open forum. It might be communicated in this Friday memo or another avenue, whatever the item is. But you are, that's a, a, a balance, you know? Accountability on both sides of the house, so to speak. Do you want to take a break, so, because I?
Anybody need a bio break or anything?
Take out like a ten-minute break, or people with a ten?
Ten minutes.
Okay, we'll come back in seven o'clock.
It's freezing in here. Is anyone else freezing?
Yes.
Came home and she said, Dad, I took your survey. I said, what survey? You know the A through G one? And she goes, I voted no. And I said, why? Why'd you just vote no? She goes, you know why? Because one of her friends had struggled taking algebra, uh, geometry for two years. And she said, she goes, Dad, she's not going to take algebra, she's just not. And she goes, she's going to go to City College. And she goes, you went to City College, Dad? And I think you did okay. And I said, wow, out of a mouth of babes, this kid is telling me that, Dad, there's multiple pathways to be successful. And so we did not adopt the A through G as a default. What we said was, everyone's on A through G and we're going to support everyone to get there. And that's how we hit a sixty percent mark when I left A through G for everybody.
But your longest meeting was two hours.
Two hours and thirty minutes.
Um, for clarification, that's two meetings a month though, correct?
Two meetings a month?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Let me add, let me add something to, let me add something to.
The size of your district is much larger than ours too.
But let, but let me add something to, let me add something to what Chris, uh, Chris is speaking to. You're not all-powerful, nor am I, okay? It makes no sense. Let's just say out there, I'm telling you, I convinced someone, I convinced you to say, yeah, let's go and you do five zero vote. I know the fact that. I know the fact that our community probably is not supporting this. We're all cooked, and we're not gonna be, be, do any other business. This won't happen. So what, what we have to do is, what we have to do is, understand that you represent the community. So, our homework, our deliberation, everything else has to happen outside for us to be able to count to say, yes, I think we can do this because we have the support of the community that you represent. So, meaning, you can't be just cookie cutter. You just can't. And, 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 and so, so that's a part of the, uh, s- uh, staff's obligation to ensure that your meetings and that you're not just gonna just rubber stamp something. Uh, uh, and then, and then, and then we all reap the wrath of the community if it's going inconsistent through the community. So, so, that's, that's why, uh, so, so this is why it's so important, uh, I wanted to bring up the two meetings. I'm glad you brought it up because I know that will be a challenge for everybody here. But I just don't see, w- w- what we were planning to do in this place, okay? What we're planning to do in this space. And to try to stay within the time limit and respect you, your work, you guys are working, the community is working. Uh, uh, the only way we do that is the content has to be flushed out enough so that way when we do vote, no one's accusing you of being cookie cutter. And because they observe the deliberation in time for that vote to take place.
And, and, and with the retreats kinda like, say for instance, I wanna, I'm gonna bring this resolution forward. We will be able to see this multiple times before we get on a dais and talk about it and vote on it. So, a lot of homework is gonna be done.
Yeah, so my question is, when are we allowed to make motions? Like, if I wanted to make a motion to go to two meetings, am I allowed to do it here, or when are we allowed to do it?
For here, for example, in a special session like this, you, you can't vote on it.
Okay, so it has to be in a general meeting?
It has to be, correct. Anytime you're gonna vote on something, it has to be an agendized item.
Okay.
And, and usually, this was just Chris Steinhaus's practice, okay? Cause I felt it was important for transparency. I never put anything on the item that was like a big ticket item that was gonna be voted on that day. So I, would be information, we'd discuss it, we'd talk about it, get the input from everybody, then bring it back next time. And then what I'd actually do then, I put information, action, so I could do either one. So for example, maybe there needs to be more debate still. And so, so I didn't, you know, because like Dr. Drotty said, I was a good vote counter. So by the time something came to the, to the dais, I was gonna, I knew it was gonna be past five oh. I, I only had, um, everything was five oh in my district with the exception of, uh, two things that were four one. And in one year, when I had, um, for six months, um, we had some crazy times, I'll be real honest with you in Long Beach, you know, fly. Um, my, uh, teachers' union had brought in this outside guy, he put on this, uh, this one board member. The board member lasted about a year and then resigned. But he, um, he voted against everything and then we had probably six months, three, two, okay? So, but everything else in those years were five oh with two exceptions of four one. And the reason why is that we made sure that we did our homework, communication, talking. Even if it was gonna take us longer, I'm gonna be really honest with you. So, I mean, when we went to like this athletic thing of making sure that you couldn't transfer schools and all that kinda of this, it took us a year to do that because, you know, we have fourteen high schools. So we gotta get input from teachers and kids and parents and all this stuff. It took us a long time and that was a four one vote, right? So, but we really felt that that time was important to do.
Hollywood is taking everybody now.
Well, that, well, so, so, so we talked about that. But the thing is, I share that with you because you, you, again, goes back to what you talked about, the, the resolution. You want a structure that says, how do I get to put something on the agenda? How's it gonna be, is communicated, staff puts it on the agenda, they do the, the, the heavy lifting, you know? Um, you know, what we did in our district, and I can give send you a copy, it just said, what was the item? What was the purpose and maybe one or two sentences of the why? And then staff might, you know, write more about that and then bring it back to the folks. But highly recommend information for discussion for the public. So the public can't come and say, hey, you never gave us opportunity to talk about it, you know? So, and then, next time, information, action, if it's ready, you know, that type of thing gives you that, that, I'm sorry, but.
So one, one of the pieces that you'll see later on when I talk about it, we have to de- develop, develop, develop structures in which we're able to engage our parents and our students. So that way, it's not just a, we think we're getting, we're hearing information from, uh, um, a, a huge swath of the, of our families. But if, if there's no structures of parent engagement or student engagement to take some of this through for discussion, uh, it'll be very difficult for me to, for us and staff to be able to say, um, for me to be able to feel confident that, uh, because you're gonna ask me, what, what, what do you think the public thinks about this? I wanna be able to say, yeah, I think we got the, we got the community. But I guess the point is, uh, if there isn't, if obviously you have, trying to have a parent group here and only have two parents out of ten thousand, ten thousand families here, like, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't have any data points to say that people are gonna accept this and.
So since we have a new Superintendent, there's some items that have been discussed months before we joined this board. Would you say we start over with that so that we can continue to talk with our new Superintendent and kinda start over fresh? Or some of those items that have been talked about a lot, do you know?
Well, if an item's already been voted on, you can always, you know, bring it back to this.
It just seems like there's being tabled and tabled and tabled. So do we start fresh with Dr. Drotty or in your opinion, or?
I would say you have a new beginning. So the beauty that you have right now, it's like an artist with a bright canvas. It's, it's, you, you have the greatest gift, you know, to be honest with you. I'm, I have goosebumps right now because I like this kinda stuff. Because Belfort is a great community and you wanna do great things. And so, by the, you know, I can feel the vibe already, everyone here wants to do it right there and the good thing. So, all we have to do is how do we get on that road to do it? And remember, I'm gonna say slow and fast, take a few items and get them done, do them well. Cause once you build a structure, it's easy, it's a piece of cake, to be really honest with you. The other part is, once you build that structure, do not violate your own norm, okay? So, what, if you say, for big ticket items, we're gonna involve all these people and do all X, you better do all those things. Cause don't say, well, we're gonna take the easy road and go this way. Cause that goes to trust, and then you're gonna do that. Uh, and Dr. Drotty's right, so the way that I did in Long Beach, I had a parent advisory, I met with a hundred parents every month. They were televised, you could see them at home, some of them came both times. I would bring those big items that we're talking about here, board members were invited to come, and they did, they were participants. I had a student advisory that I would meet with from all the high schools, you know, and they, they gave things. I gave, actually gave them money to spend and, you know, all that kinda stuff. And they, um, I had teachers I met with. So the thing is, all these stakeholders have to be involved, okay? So by the time it gets to you guys, you know, you may not have participated in all those meetings, but you know there were structures that came up. And we did a lot of surveys, a lot of open ended stuff. Staff spent a lot of time, so by the time it gets to you, we've done a lot of heavy lifting. Not all the heavy lifting, to be honest with you, but a lot of the heavy lifting. Um, but I do wanna stop because I want, I feel strongly that we wanna come up with these outcomes, okay? So, we can talk about this stuff another time. I just wanna thank you, first of all, for doing the work that you're doing. But I do think we need to talk about some rules of engagement, rule, norms, and, and, because that's gonna set you go forth, okay? Cause once you have those as, as, doesn't mean you can't change them, you know? But it, wherever they're gonna be, so, um, Dr. Drotty has some examples that he's had in Santa Monica. I'll give you some examples, but I, I was thinking, Ben, what we could do is, after we do some talk, break into some teams, have people come up with them and then come back to consensus, then we can come up with a list. But I'm gonna talk about, again, this is how you build trust. So, you know, it's those simple things of communication, you know, all those things that you talked about. It's how we're gonna conduct ourselves with each other and with the public out there, you know? I'll give you an example in Long Beach. Prior to Dr. Cohn, Dr. Cohn was the Superintendent before me, he was there for ten years. When Dr. Juney was the Superintendent from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-two, nobody could speak to the Superintendent, I mean, nobody could speak to the board members except for the Superintendent. That, that was very close. No staff members, nobody, okay, it was like, so the board did not like that. They're like, wait a minute, we wanna go to a school, we're gonna go to a school. So we changed that. So one of the rules is, in Long Beach, we've continued it for the last thirty years, is that board members or the governing team, they can go to any school that they want. In Long Beach, you're, you're, uh, by areas, but they can go to any school they want. They tell the Superintendent, I'm gonna go to school X, they communicate. But the board doesn't tell the principal, how to run the school, or the teacher, and that kinda, but it's important for the board to be out there. The board can meet with any staff member, but the staff member and the board are all gonna communicate with the Superintendent of what we're doing. So there are no backdoor deals or none of this stuff, it's all this communication piece. So I used to give the board my calendar every, on a weekly basis. So the board, you know, where I'm at all the time, you know, it's all these things, all about transparency. So, and again, going back to one of the, the norms we had was, if we share it with one, it's shared with all. And so, and again, we had, you know, no surprises. It's, so think of those things that you want to, to, cause our job as staff is to implement your policies, and I'm gonna be really honest with you, to make you look really good. I mean, that is the honest, I always told my board, my job is to make you look good because when you look good, we all look good and we're all doing the right thing. So it's this thing, you know, doesn't mean that we're gonna not have some deep conversations about things and some disagreements. I had this one board member who would say, you know, Chris, I know I'm the oddball out, but I believe strong in a five oh, so I'm voting for it. You know, he had disagreement about certain things, but he always came on. And, and it's important that we as board members, like even to me as a CSU trustee, I'm gonna have to vote on a policy next week that I don't necessarily agree with, okay? I think it's not the right thing we should do, but I'm gonna vote for it because it's important that we send a, a message to the, to the public that it's unanimous. And so it's, that's, even though I know that we can tweak it down the road a little bit, but it's important that, you know, um, cause I know I'm the oddball out, I'm like, you know, why would I have twenty-four to one? It's, that doesn't make sense. I, I don't need to send a message, do you see what I'm saying? We, it's important for the, the rank and file here to see us as a unified group. Doesn't mean that we can't have good discussion and disagreement, but when we're going forth, we want, you know, five oh, four one, that type of thing. Ben, you said. So, in that particular situation, would you make a point before your vote to express maybe how something could be better and your thoughts on it? And then, that's why I'm going to be unified? I, I, I just did that at the board meeting at the CSU trustees, I said, you guys know where I feel on this, this is the reasons why, blah, 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 blah. However, the consensus of the group is to do X. I'm gonna, I'm a team player, I'm gonna be with the group, and I'm gonna work with staff to fine tune the areas that I believe should be fine tuned in the future, okay? But I'm not gonna take my marbles and go home, you know, and say, you know, I made a. Could you imagine if I stood up as a trustee, what the LA Times would do with that? If I said, you know, former Superintendent votes, yes, you know, but, uh, that becomes the story. No, that's not what the story should be about, the story should be about the bigger message, okay? So, um, you wanna pass?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So these are, uh, these are items that I just kinda collected, um, you guys should have one, okay, you all have that? But these are, I mean, items that are somewhat collected. Let, let me just add something to what Chris said, uh, in this whole thing is, you guys are individual thinkers. You're individual thinkers. But the goal is, but their, their idea is, can you act as a collective as a board? Meaning, how do we respect your individuality and your, your own personal thoughts on things? And yet still get to a collective so we can do the business with the board? Uh, uh, I wanna be able to pers- we wanna be able to preserve that, okay? You preserve that. What I don't want you, you guys being accused of is being a rubber stamp, okay? So, so, it, it, I am a very transparent person, I don't have anything to hide. I hope that because of the transparency, you know what the game plan is. The staff that I'm going to are gonna know the game plan, okay? At the site level, it, so, when you're out there talking to folks, if you're being leveraged somehow because the individual or whatnot is, isn't with it, two things are happening, either the whole group isn't with it, then, then that means, uh, I didn't do my job to make sure that people appreciate what we're trying to do. But if there's people leveraging you, undercutting somehow, that's, that's still information. Now, I'm hoping you understand, you can either explain to them later, just say, I'm on board with what's happening. Or you bring me information back to say, this is what's happening, uh, 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 this is what's happening. And if you don't wanna be the one to state that, but I guess my point is, don't, if, if you, if you like the work, don't undermine it through, 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 uh, uh, through others. Because I trust the fact that you are with me in, in what we're doing. My job is to ensure that I have the majority going forward with us. And I would never recommend things, like I said before, that isn't gonna, that the staff, I can't control things in the classroom from here, okay? All I can do is influence and, and encourage and hopes that people believe in the work and they do it. Uh, but, uh, and, and the only way we're gonna know that it's happening is if it's actually happening, right? But if it's happening and somebody's saying, I don't, I don't wanna be any PLCs and I need to be left alone, I'm with you, professor learning and, 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 that's a simple example, but there'll be ways people are trying to leverage you. And I think that's when you, that's when you, that's when you either let me know, and if you, if that's consistent throughout, then that's a problem. But if it's one person, you gotta consider that as what it is. So, uh, with that, uh, with that, um, there are some norms that we created, maybe we can, uh, put up some of those up there too, for the public to see. These are, uh, based on my experience, uh, in Santa Monica, Malibu, I have seven board members there and it wa- it wasn't easy, getting them together. And then it probably is probably way more complex in this situation here. I know you all got different views on things here and there, I respect that, but it, but this e- ended up working for us and we did some wonderful things there. And, uh, and you're talking, Chris knows, it's a, it's a highly, highly political environment.
Yeah, and I, and I just wanna say this, you know, and I'm not saying this because you're sitting next to my wife. You're blessed to have this guy because Santa, I, I praise Santa Monica all the time. Santa Monica is a very high performing district, okay? So if you're looking just from the outside, you're saying, wow, good test scores, you know, everything that real estate agents and all this stuff want. But what they've done is that they've actually drilled down on their problems of practice, the equity issues. And they have really done some unbelievable things. And it was because of Dr. Drotty and the board working together to put some bold things forth, like the grading practice. I mean, I'm gonna tell you right now, I've worked with hundreds of districts, there aren't a lot of districts that have a grading practice that says, you cannot give an F more than fifty percent. That's huge, because the power of zero is, is critical. I mean, I've had kids who tell me, why should I try, I got a zero, there's no, there's no hope. And, but the more important work then is how do you implement it in the, in the, in the, in the field? And I'm blessed to be able to work with their high school to do that. So I'm sharing that with you because, you know, a highly privileged community, a hundred different wants and needs, okay? But, and, 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 and I'll, I'll tell you this, I said to this at the high school, five percent of high schools is black. So they had four students that were in eleventh grade that exceeded in mathematics. That should be twenty-five students, if you look at proportionality. And I said, so, we have a problem now, so how, and they all acknowledge it, so now they're addressing that problem in practice. So it's that kinda stuff that we're talking about. When we're talking about equity, it's really about serving those students and having those high expectations, so. So, Dr. Drotty, do you wanna, um, this is, these are great starting point.
So this is the starting point, it's something for you to mull over. Um, there's sta- the staff norms and board, uh, uh, for board meetings. And this is strictly for how we conduct ourselves at board meetings and also in lead up to the board meetings. And so if there are some things that, uh, we, that, that we need to add or delete, if you agree with it, I think we can break up into teams to see if this makes sense to you, doesn't make sense to you, or even if it addresses some of your, some of your concerns. So, for example, Amy, you mentioned, uh, uh, Stuart, Stuart, even Stuart, you mentioned that, how do I, uh, your question was, how do we get, uh, uh, items on the board that we've been always wanting to do? Uh, ma- maybe include there, uh, in, in there, under the staff, that, uh, 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 some, some language that says, I wanna, uh, we, we get to put something on the board.
There needs to be a process, support members could.
Yeah. It was, and, and, and some of it, it already, but sometimes this is just something that, as a reminder, my goal is to have this laminated and put it in front of you at the, at the dais, so we, uh, uh, so, so that we, uh, uh, you get to see it. And then also, in a, in a while here, I need to also educate the community about what board meetings are. Uh, because often communities just don't know what it is, they think it's a town hall. And that puts us in a, a disadvantage. So, we're gonna, we're gonna discover what a study session is, describe it and put it up there and laminate it, things for people to read. A discussion item is, uh, we're gonna put down what a retreat is. Like today, I got a bunch of questions, but what is this? What, so like, ah, people don't know where, how do I explain what a retreat is? And, and I'm hoping people, I was hoping people come, came in this room to see what it is. But that tells me I need to also put something up there so people read it. It could be some rules about how you engage the board and, and just clarity. So, uh, like in the classroom, the word walls that educate the students, this is my classroom, you know? So I need to educate the, the whole community about what is taking place here.
And it doesn't mean that whatever ones you eventually adopt, that you can't change it. So, because that's part of continuous improvement. Are they working, are they not working, you know? So, the, cause what you don't want is a list of a thousand things, you know? If you had a, do you have Head Start here?
When did we have?
Head Start has over seven hundred indicators. It's crazy how many indicators. I had Head Start for, you know, thirty years, so I was deeply involved in Head Start. How do you, you know?
It's not Head Start, it's our early child.
Early childhood education.
Yeah, it's good mistake.
But so you don't wanna, um, um, just a checklist, you know, you want some really good things. So let's break into these three here, these three over here, and staff over here. So we, you know, pay attention to both sides and then make notes and then we'll come and we'll facilitate what people, try to come to consensus, you know what I'm saying?
And I'll walk around to, for, but clarification if anybody needs it, so. The, the goal is to try to give you guys something that you had to, so, in the past, what I noticed is, there are some things, uh, if you start with the staff, you're gonna, you're gonna really be good.
Yeah, I have to carry both of them.
Yeah, I, I started him.
The explanations, so in the, so in this board meeting, that you have a board, something called, that now, unless it's confidential, is not gonna be attached to the actual board agenda that the public sees at the same time, right? This is what you gotta be careful of.
Okay, sorry about that.
If you, let's say, if you don't ask me questions, and all of a sudden you come in.
So we're just looking at which one of these do you like?
No, he puts all the ones he wants us to follow him, that we can modify or.
He used to have this suggestion, if we feel that there's something else, something we can add to, if we need to tweak something, we can tweak it.
What, I definitely liked the first one, the agenda, by my opinion, concise comments, I think. It's kinda vague, but I agree. I also think like having a, maybe something, technology to assist, like I know, uh, people say, uh, like, if you wanna speak, you just have to press it. You don't need to do that, you know, don't have to interrupt somebody just to get your comments in. Yeah, they even have like a queue, like this person pressed first and then you have this order. But you're having, to avoid back and forth, having everybody have the opportunity to talk is a good one. But I mean, that's really just Robert's rule, you're supposed to do that.
It is, and then maybe adopt, um, like a stem of, like, this person goes first.
Yeah, I think that would be, like, we never, yeah.
Well, once one member speaks, then you check, you know, that one time.
Yeah.
That would be the board president.
Well, I see.
So, yes, and so I think, I'm sorry, you wanna see?
So I thi- I think the, the, the order would be more for like a, for voting. Like I think that's a good idea, like a lot of boards that have like an order of voting, as opposed like that kinda random, like revolving. But ABC does, I think Long Beach does that, they have like a specific order, I think that helps the efficiency, cause people know when they're voting.
You mean when Elaine calls out our names?
Yeah.
You want the same person called out at the same time?
They're just in order.
The order that she calls us out would be the same.
Yeah, so you want, so you could call first, Marv second, I'd just, you'd want it that happened all the time.
So I think ABC does it, which might help with that, medical orders, and then some of them do it like member, member, and then it goes clerk, DP. Everyone does it differently, but it's not like a, they say, you don't have to keep track of like, oh wait, I have one first last. I, I find it does, I've been watching a lot of board meetings and you can see like it really smoothes it up. Also like, like having board members participate in the meeting as opposed to just. When there's, for, you know, public comments, you know, clerk, like other, public comments, like having like more structured.
So you, you brought up two separate things, what I heard.
Yeah.
First, you brought up about the roll call as far as the consistency of names being the same, that's separate. But then you also brought up.
That's the discussion I would have with you, must on in, then at the end, I'm gonna give you, say, then by the way, this is never all that.
So we can add them, or.
Uh, so having the, the board run the meeting, so like, uh, public comments would be, uh, so they would say, ask like the clerk, like, are there any public comments? And the clerk would have like the ticket.
Can I say something real quick, but they asked a very good question, I wanted to show off, but they obviously. I gave you guys two documents through the other day, and some of you probably haven't checked, like, you guys are working. Very important you read the flow of this here, and we'll talk about this, uh, what consent is. Consent is always gonna be routine items that don't need much deliberation. It's stuff that, uh, we did a, we did a, um, classification change or something, very simple, things like that. If there's anything that needs to have, would have deliberation, I'm not gonna have them in the board meeting and give you a whole packet as if that, that's, that's the discussion item. You're not gonna come, I'm not gonna surprise you that way. I would have discussion items all along the way, uh, for you, and then whatever I task for that board meeting, and, and then you have the attachment following, it shouldn't sound unfamiliar to you, but you can discuss at some points. So it's not as if I'm, I'm gonna keep you in your room for, from Friday, you're reading some big document for an answer, you're asking questions. You're not gonna be surprised that way. This is why we're talking about how many meetings we're gonna have. Because otherwise, if you just say, if I don't have these study sessions and things like that, I will have to give you all their research. For a piece of paper for you to read it and expect you to turn it on Friday, expect you to. Yeah, that's my kind of thing, so, 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 so in that sense, when, when we say, contact superintendent with the agenda question by Monday, is because I've dead, I've dead enough with preparing you all along, and what you read is, is, is a familiar, another thing, so. So otherwise, if, if we don't have those discussion items, that everything is under vote, under consent, and then you have to say, I gotta pull this, I gotta, I gotta understand this. I gotta understand all this and this is, it won't work.
Absolutely.
Anyway, keep, uh, there's something we need to teach too, so.
Public comments.
Yeah, so like having a, like, I don't know how to word that, is the board taking an active role as this to manage the meeting?
Usually the president calls for public comment, so you're saying you want the clerk to do that now?
No, that, that, we're gonna ask if there is public comment, so right, right now, we ask, and they would be going through the cards and then they would say.
Well, no.
You're saying a more interactive role in reading.
But the president already has the cards, I'm not sure you understand that. They collect the cards, it's a form of language that they introduce. I wanna make sure he understands it. So, they don't have the cards, the president has the cards. So when the president says, um, staff, do we have any public comments, then it's more as a formality, you don't have to say that.
Oh, okay, so you.
That's a formality, she already has the cards, so she knows, that's my point. Yeah, that's why I make sure you understood that.
So I guess it's still there, so where I would say, instead of like, like the public facing of like, deferring to that, like you would just defer to your, the person next to you.
Yeah.
So it's more of like, that it's just on the board's right of the meeting.
Right, cause the Meyer has the cards, so she says, okay, we have some, uh, public comments, and you start to read them off, instead of saying, do the staff, do we have public comments?
Right, right.
It's just a formality, you just change the board.
So I mean, and I guess that'd be like, maybe sorta like generalize, like my suggestion on this would be to, uh, like, uh, parliamentary procedures of how we run meetings. Um, I find there's a stark contrast, that, uh, there's meetings that are a little bit more efficient, like, any of like the languages we use. I think there's like a, I don't know, how would you word that, parliamentary procedures, I guess.
You mean Robert's rules?
No, like, uh.
What are you referring to specifically that you like, you changed?
So, specifically, having the court ask the board about public comments, and how we address each other on the board, is it? Um, so like, my president, like the little colleague, uh, I don't know, so, don't word, I think, my opinion, very casual. Um, so however we wanna word that.
We hadn't been catching in the past when I served on.
I know, and I've, I've noticed that, it's been.
It just happened recently, so.
There's been a shift, so I would say would be good for us to kinda shift back. And, and to what, to what level? I don't know, I know some are really, do it like, you know, they're getting away coming with their wig.
No, but I do agree with you that we need to stay, you know, with our last names, and my colleagues or, or board members.
I think it would be a good, yeah. Alright, so, you're afraid of interacting with public speakers, I don't think we have too much of an issue with that.
Well, it's not a public meeting, so.
Right.
Shouldn't be doing that anymore.
Right, um, you intend to avoid texting?
I never had my phone.
I've only had one opportunity to do that, and it's probably gives me the feedback, so I probably would do that. Speak no more than this minute, that one's hard, right?
Does that mean, to a single agenda item?
That one.
See what they mean by that?
Who wants to put a little?
You know, I think somebody's saying is like, if just, if somebody has already made a comment, then you don't necessarily have to do, like, yeah, kinda chime in and say like, oh, I think, you know, X, Y, Z.
Well, I think, I think it's more like a. Yeah, I think it's sort of.
That's already there.
I think it's just more like putting a limit on each agenda.
Just what his ideas. What were you referring to here when you speak no more than to a single agenda item? So per board member, they speak no more than what? Are you talking about?
Yeah, so this one was, uh, what they did is that you as a board member would have a, an agreement that you wouldn't speak on every item.
Yeah, you don't have to say.
You don't have to, like, so for example, in some systems, some board members speak on every single item, even though there's no, there's, there's really no. So they had an agreement that, you know, whatever X was, was it three times, four times, you know, two times, whatever happens.
So we can put one time?
You could, so in Long Beach, that was the agreement. In Long Beach, they, they had a norm that says, I'm only gonna speak if it's absolutely necessary. Why would I, you know, and I don't know if you guys do it here, but, um, uh, at, in Long Beach, they have, um, at the end of the, um, the meeting, they have a, a board report, so every board member gives a report. But what we had to do is kinda come to an agreement at the time, because some board members were taking like fifteen minutes, it's like, you can't do this. We, we agree that no more than three minutes, if we're giving the public three minutes, we said, we gotta mod.
Yeah.
And then some people, some people didn't say anything, cause they had no report to give, you know, which is okay.
Powers have never been extensive, you know, in the past.
It's just, you know, just things that you guys truly believe that would work and help you and you could live by. And if you, you know, I wouldn't put anything on there that you truly don't believe that you could live by, you know, it's like, well. And then personally, I think after six minutes, you need to ask yourselves, is this working, is it making it better for us? Cause you guys know, you're, you're the bosses, you know what's happening, so, and then we, and we go from there, so.
It's fair, um, meeting will conclude by this time, uh, unless there's approval, I mean.
I don't think it'll be necessary if we go to two meetings or something.
Yeah.
And especially if he, if he, if we adopt the cycle that he's talking about, we would have seen that arrangement two, three times.
I think just a few of these changes, period, will figure that out, cause I really think it's like that, a lot of the presentations, like, things go a lot longer. And, I mean, obviously like that, that, the thing nobody wants is we go to two meetings and then there are two long meetings, right? So then it's like, you're trying to solve something, you know, it's.
And then it gets worse.
But, I mean, I, I think like with his leadership, like he will put us in a position to speed these up. And, and so I've, I've never really had strong feelings on the timeline, but just because as long as we're saying that the board, the majority can vote to extend it if necessary, then it's all really kinda just a formality, right? We're saying like, hey, it's important, and then the board votes, and then you can't, you can't extend it, so I'm not opposed to saying like, this is, this is what we're aiming for.
That's what I was trying to say last time, but I even piloted it, I thought, but you guys were so resistant to it.
Never.
You were.
Never.
It's on tape.
Never.
But you were trying to limit.
Yes, till nine, we could've tried it, we could've piloted it.
I, I think with a little bit more discussion, we could've, we could've gotten it, cause that's how it felt from the very beginning, so it's.
Well, damage is done.
How are we doing?
Super, yeah. Um, so, that being said, I think it's fine, but I think going forward to two meetings is.
You said his meetings never went over. The longest was two hours and a half. Twice a month, not more, that was the longest. Yeah, his, his longest was two hours.
That's, that's still.
So that's a lot.
That's our goal, and I'm pretty sure that.
But I wanted to ask him, does that include its closed session? Cause every meeting has a closed session.
I mean, four hours of meeting like per month is kind of, it's kinda par for us, right? So like, if he's doing four hours of meetings per month, we're doing the same, I get that it's shorter, but that's, that'd be.
Well, it's a two, but it's a large district, yeah, it's much larger than ours.
And we can always bring this back if it's not working, so we can always take it, we can change it, we can deal with it if we want.
So it takes minutes, I think even how we did it today works, you know, I, personally for me, like, I enjoy breaks, so, I don't know, where you'd be, two hours, you just take a break?
I, I agree.
But it all depends on with how we're structuring our meetings from now on.
Yeah.
But even at a two minute, two and a half, let's just say two and a half, maybe three, most, if we ever go to three, um, we still need a break. I need to go to the restroom, I'm not sure someone else is made for it.
But I, I also think it's, it needs to be coming on us to say like, if we do need a break, say, I'm not, I'm, I'm not afraid to say I need a break. Like, I've, this is the smallest bladder ever, it's like, I'll have to. So I mean, but I think like, even an hour, I mean, it's, there's nothing wrong with reading the room and saying like, is it, do any my colleagues need a break? Um, I think it's totally fair.
So, this, so what you're saying is, it'll be there, but we don't necessarily have to exercise it all the time?
Maybe like ninety minutes, like you put like.
Put ten minute break for every hour and a half or two hours?
I think that's definitely fair to consider.
Is ten minutes too long then?
I think ten minutes is good, especially cause there's not, there's not that many, there's more than two people. Right, yeah, well, they take restroom breaks throughout, so.
No, I mean access.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Attain consensus on staff direction, that's, that's important too, I have, I, you have more experience than I do with the importance of that, or like, sometimes it doesn't happen. But I would assume that's an important thing.
Yes, it's, I'm saying, you know, um, so, it's, that means, that's something that we can, we can. I'm not sure exactly, if it's something that, I mean, I think that when he's gonna, like, bring that cycle in, where we're seeing the items and the issues three times, that means by the time we get there, it should bring consensus.
Well, I think this is more for discussion items, right? So like, when we, there is a discussion, like, getting, not just letting the discussion end, cause I think that's what's happening, it's getting, or, it's just like, nothing happens, but it doesn't become an act, it's not, it's not on the next agenda. So being very clear with staff, it's like, okay, do we have consensus as a board to get more information on this and for the next meeting? I think just like making sure our, our language is clear enough to give direction.
So be detailed.
Is that what, is that what it's saying?
Well, for example, if I'm giving direction, staff on a topic that we're talking about, that we all agree that's the direction we wanna go in and give that staff member, so.
What does it look like? Cause I know like, if you were to vote on something, you would like, get consensus, would you just add like, or present, say like, do we have consensus on the board?
Well, like for example, when you was bringing up the resolution of, um, yeah, land acknowledgement. So then, we would direct staff, could you please look into the process of what we need to do in order to have that resolution in place? We would need to all be in agreement to say that, so that one member doesn't say, well, I don't know, do we have any, uh, tribal land in Bellflower? So, I'm saying something different than what you're saying, like, do we really need this? Because I'm giving you an example, I'm not just saying, I'm not. So then we, that would show that we're not in consensus.
But isn't that normal to ask that though? I would expect somebody would ask that in the discussion, right?
Well, I, I think that sometimes the discussion ends in just like, my opinion, your opinion, your opinion, and then it goes like, well, let's move on to the. And then it goes like, well, let's move on to the next item. And it doesn't end in consensus, because there is no vote. So I think like...
Well, no directions given to staff.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really a vote.
No, exactly, but, but it's, it's asking for that, because sometimes it's kind of, you just have the different opinions, and sometimes it doesn't sound like a disagreement, it just sounds like a different opinion, but it's giving clarity on like, is there consensus on the board?
I think we need clarity on the name.
No, I'll be honest, I actually have a pause as well, I talk about breaks, and then I just rest, so I'm gonna run it.
Go break. Sorry, we have a question. Sorry, we'll, we'll return it back to you. So we had a, um, uh, question about this. What if you do remain...
So what I think he means by this one is, um, uh, um, that you as, this is where that five O comes in, or one that you have consensus, that you don't, that, um, sort of this...
For staff's direction.
So I think...
That's always confusing, right?
Yeah, I think what he's...
It's not a vote, right?
No, it's a recommendation, so it's really a recommendation.
Yeah.
So, so if staff is recommending, I'll just make something up, that you, you, you add X to the L cap, you know, for Y? That you, you, you discuss it, you implement, you ask clarifying questions, but that you, you know, they've done their homework. They would never bring you something that, you know, obviously you haven't enrolled in. I think that's why it's really important, um, if you can, if you haven't, if you don't do it now, that as many board members as possible go to those different meetings. So, so whether it be the DCA, or, you know, the D-LAC, or the L cap, you know, I always bless my board members. At times I'd have four of them, and you're not violating the Brown Act, cause you're not voting on anything.
No, we're just there listening.
You're just there, you know, and I think it's a point, to be honest, really, what, at least my members of the public truly appreciate, was when they go, I, I have really connections to my, you know, the people running the system, because they're hearing what the voices are. And then at the board meeting, you might say, I heard the community wanted X, and I understand where they're coming, but we can't give everything now, we have to do, see what I'm saying? So they, they see this transparency and this, this trust that I'm listening, I'm doing, that type of thing. But it's not, like you said, it's not, you know, it's just a recommendation to you guys, that you guys can say, here now. No, I think, you know, you guys are, I'm excited, you guys are, I love it, cause I love... But I think you guys, you're blessed, he's, he's, he's a driver, sorry, I think you guys, and for a good ride, so, no. When he told me what's going here, I said, how'd they catch you? Did you guys have a, a recruiter up there doing it? Good job.
The president, the president.
You know, and that's so important, people don't understand, but when you wanna bring about change, you gotta go out with gift. So, you know, straight casting a wide path, you say, hey, I want you to do this. Kudos, kudos. We have to do the same thing with CSU, we have to have new chancellor. So we're doing it like you guys, we're gonna go out for select group, they go wide path, and say, this is where we're in, and hopefully, they marry us.
Yes. So what he was saying is that, um, you find a consensus is when, like, we go onto different committees, and we're listening to, to what they're saying, and that when we come over here, we're all talking about the thing that we understand what's going on, and have kind of a pulse on what people are saying.
He called it a recommendation. So like, but he doesn't, yeah, it's a recommendation that we give staff that we're unanimous about it as a board.
So that when we give direction to staff, we are not telling them, like, you say one thing, and then you say another, and I say something to my person, there's three different directions.
It's just hard with the Brown Act, because we really don't know, sometimes I'm directing, so...
About five more minutes and we'll come back together?
I think you're thinking something different.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm, I think I'm...
I think if we're, when we're out there, and we're going to, after we have said yes, we're so far with this, and this is how we want to do it.
Oh, so it's after a decision?
Yes.
Oh, got it.
We, we give them the...
So after the vote, okay.
Communication.
I thought this, no, no, but this is under discussion items. There is no vote on a discussion.
And we're not talking about voting.
I know, it's under discussion items, attain consensus on staff direction with discussion.
Right, so he's saying, if he was saying it's more of a recommendation that we're offering to staff, that's what he kept saying. It's not really, you know, a vote or a discussion, it was more of a recommendation. That's what I understood when he said that.
I understood it differently. Maybe we just need, maybe we need a little more discussion.
I think we needed to be here, cause he was really your question.
I timed my break poorly, is that what happened? That's fine, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up.
No, but this is good, I mean, we should ask it, cause I'm pretty sure that, you know, someone else may have that question.
I just, yeah, I just feel like if it's with a discussion, and that means there is no vote, so you really don't have...
No, there's no vote, right, right about that.
Because it's a discussion item.
And he's saying it's more inside of a consensus, it's a recommendation, that's what I understood himself.
But to staff, we have to give a direction.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back. Um, so then with the staff norms reporting, yeah, jumps out.
I think we should limit presentations to...
I'm, I'm gonna go to catering department.
Having three presentations at one, we had four last time. It was a lot of information.
But I think that, once we do the two meetings, that may not be an issue.
When we do, uh, like celebrations or acknowledgements, maybe like having those loaded on one board meeting as opposed to both of them?
Like at the end of the month.
Like the lighter board meeting, or yeah, or maybe like this?
Which are the lighter ones?
Yeah, um, yeah, but definitely leave the presentations, cause going through all those slides, if there's more than two, it's, it's a lot.
I mean, the facilities was more than enough at that time.
Yeah.
And she had the budget, and then we had the textbooks, and it was just really...
It, it wasn't a lot, but it was because we only have one at this moment, had we had two.
But also, I think, even with the textbook, I know that...
I think it's core planning of staff. Cause you could separate things out as far as what we're adding, what we're supposed to do.
Hey, yeah.
I'm sorry, but that's...
No, no, I...
But e- even like with the, I know the, the textbooks can, uh, to the citizens task force, and I, I don't think we unionize committees in that task force very well. But like, maybe, like, uh, answer some of the questions, like, maybe they could have said something about, cause I mean, they, they sat through the whole presentation, the textbooks, like, we never heard anything from them, so it's kind of like, what's the purpose of that task force? Unless they're speaking to the board, so like, so maybe...
A lot of people were complaining about it.
Really?
Yeah.
I could imagine.
Carlos, all the, um, I think his last name was. He said, I think those, the task force is a joke. And I said, wait a minute, they're representing us, if it's a joke, you need to tell us why, so we can correct it.
It's because of what he's saying, because we...
I was on the task force, and he's not wrong.
Well, you know, I disappointed you, remember, I had one, last time she never told me what was going on.
Right, right.
Cause they're supposed to report back to us, cause they represent us.
Right.
I think he goes both ways, he's like waiting to reach out, and then also ask, hey, how are you doing?
Even if, just like, when, something is, cause every month there was a different presentation, it's just like, it's basically the presentation's question.
I know, I was on.
So, yeah, so like, if, if they were, uh, if we had them speak at the board, like, you know, what they were presenting, even if it's like three minutes, like, at least, like, there's an engagement, we know what they were presented, and so we have questions to ask.
Is there a lead person in that group?
Yeah.
They have a member.
I think it's, is he, is he still the president?
I believe he still is.
Are you kidding? Oh my God, he was president when I was there.
He's still president?
Like over ten years ago.
So maybe we should, maybe we should have it like, rotate or something.
I'm surprised.
I think maybe just like getting them to like, report, or just utilizing more.
It should be a different person, so they get knowledge and different experiences. Wow, that's surprising to me.
Uh, so I mean, uh, presentations, definitely limit those, um, the why of each presentation, all the supporting talks, all the attachment. How, how do you feel the presentations are, do you feel like they're typically longer than necessary, or are they, are they pretty okay?
I think we should be given communication prior to the presentation.
Yeah.
I think, you know, mention, say, oh, by the way, we're having a presentation, I mean, I come and thinking, where did this come from? Like, why are...
But that's why that process, I think, can start taking us through, it's so...
So I think that, I think that we should put the heads up and provide, and put even if we wanted to, about the presentation.
Well, I'm doing it, I'm doing it, the facility's must spend a bigger presentation, but, like, I went through all of it before the meeting. So like, to sit through the presentation that, like, you already went through, I know it's more for the public as well, but, I don't know, it's a lot to go through. To why, I don't know, um...
What are you saying, I'm sorry, you lost me?
So, like, we get like the presentation before you, right?
I'm saying it'd be good just to know what it's about before we come up, so that, I mean, I saw the packets, of course, and I saw the handout, but I didn't know who was coming. My point is, is that, why are we like not informed ahead of time?
Like before it gets to our host.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that, I, I agree, but I think that that process is trying to...
So seeing more like the annual calendar of things coming up?
Yes, yes, and, and that's, and that's what we need, we need a calendar, and we need...
So I'm gonna start with the Board of Education, our governance team. So looking at these, 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 um, norms here, um, that Bennett shared with us, are there any norms here that anyone cannot live with? Of this list here, you say, hey, this, this is a non-deal breaker with me, I just cannot, this is no go. Yes?
Um, I guess my question on the time limits is, it would depend on how many meetings we had. So we didn't really answer that one, because we weren't, we weren't sure.
So is there consensus on putting that in the parking lot? That we have to revisit that one, based on whatever you discuss, discuss?
No.
No?
I think if we're gonna have a meeting, like, we're gonna go to twice a month. Until we do that, we end at nine P M.
So, so...
I disagree.
So we don't have a, we don't have consensus on them, so we're gonna have to revisit that one, okay? So, let's put a check by that one then.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, are there any others that we're gonna have to revisit, that people can't, uh, you know, that, may, pose a problem?
There was one, the staff norms.
Well, well, let's hold out one for a minute.
Oh, sorry.
So we're just gonna do this side first.
Okay.
Then we'll go to the other side. Are there any items that people wanted to add, or to enhance, or to clarify, that were written down here? I know there were some discussions, uh, as we walked around.
Um, we were thinking about perhaps making, um, a consistent, you know, way of taking roll call.
Okay. Yeah, and I, and one of the items brought up here, Bennett, is I would say would be a, um, item for future, uh, study, was, um, how to use technology to, to enhance that efficiency, so, um, that we're not interrupting people. There are other systems, I think you mentioned, ABC.
So ABC uses a, a queue system where, uh, trustee wants to speak, so it just lights up, so you don't get that person, so they don't need to interrupt somebody or get in the...
We have the same type of system in the CSU, so that what you do is you put the light on, everyone sees it, and it's, it's very efficient and smooth. So that might be an item that we look at, that there would be a time issue, because we'd have to bring it back, how much does it cost, and all kind of stuff.
Could, could you read that again, what, what you, what you wrote down?
Um, have a roll call consistency for the board.
What, currently, what, how do, how do you currently do that right now?
It's kind of random. It's rotating.
Okay.
Yes, and maybe by last name, and, I mean, I, I would rather go last, myself.
Okay.
So I, I don't know how Long Beach, I know, ABC, I've been watching Long Beach board meetings and ABC, and they both do it differently. Um, but some of them do member, member by last name, then it goes clerk, VP, president, and that's consistent. Then some of them just do it alphabetically, but it's the same one each time.
Is there a particular order that people wanna see, or anything like that, or that people might object to? Because that seems, seem pretty easy to simplify to just say, let's go, you're all gonna get terms, uh, is there...
I, I think the random order, I, I like the random order, myself. The president, um, usually goes last.
Okay.
That's usually very consistent with the president's people.
But everybody else is, except for now that we have a student board, student board always goes first.
Correct.
And the president goes last.
Yep.
Everything else is random, I think that's very fair, random.
Can, can we live with that? Anybody object to that at all?
I also believe though, that if you have consistency, that it makes the meeting go smoother, because I've seen where people are waiting to hit their button, because they don't know when they're going to be called. So I kind of see both ways.
I, I like the idea, I like how, if you see their practice of, uh, member, member, clerk, VP, president, that's what I would...
I like that too.
Member.
I agree.
Member, clerk, VP.
And you know, the beauty of this, this, these, these norms right here is that a recommendation would be in six months, you do a self-check. Are they working, is it not working, is it, you know, that type of thing? And, cause the whole idea is about efficiency for the meetings, eh, eh, efficiency for public input, or to move the ship forward. I mean, that's, it's, it's about, cause in the, the bottom line is, is that, and we didn't talk about this, but it's, we all are here. We're all about student, eh, um, achievement, it's all about student achievement, and going back to the mantra, would you put your kid in that classroom, you know, and, and that's the important piece.
So then why can't we try nine as a pilot? Why are you so opposed and so animate against that?
For the time piece?
Yes.
Me, or?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Um, I agree with President Garza when she talked last meeting about being able to have debates and discussions as long as...
You can still pilot it.
As long as needed for what the discussion is leading, and gathering all the different perspectives. And I'm not against it, depending on if there's one meeting, two meetings, like, to say nine o'clock, if we're having one meeting, I don't agree with that. If we're having two meetings, I might agree with that, I don't know, but since we're not really talking about that, and we're waiting to see, I don't really wanna comment on that.
But I think, I, I, what I'm hearing, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing that you're not opposed to the time limit, you're just, well, before you wanna talk about that, you wanna talk about the bigger structure.
I'm opposed to the time limit, but I would be willing to vote for that, if the whole consensus of my team was vote, I would vote with them on that.
So in the past, what I've done in Santa Monica Mall, sometimes it fails, sometimes it didn't. It's really about where you're gonna put an agenda item, to see how long it'll go, so, so for example, cabinet and I are gonna come together and say, how, I'll ask them, how long do we think this item is gonna take? Okay, fifteen minutes? So we're, we're gonna be very consistent, what we're gonna do is, is more or less about the response from the community and from, from you all. So, so we have now guessed, how much do we think public comment is gonna, how many people are coming for this, depending on the situation? How long do we think public comment is gonna be? And then, how long do we think deliberation is gonna be? We have to kind of guess that, and then put a time limit, so I wonder if we do this. This is gonna have to change anyway, because, uh, I haven't set the calendar, year calendar for the rhythm yet. Right now, I'm living on stuff that already exists, you know, it just, you know, we have nineteenth, I, you know. Why these are right now is just based on, I gotta trust the fact that you guys have some kind of conversations along the way to say, these items for the nineteenth are here. Uh, where is leading to, I'm not clear yet, right? So, uh, because, because we're, we're, we're in the middle of it right now. Until we get to, but at some point, I'm gonna structure things to say, in a yearly basis, it's all the topics that we're gonna talk about. And then, and then that's gonna then tell me, okay, do we need two meetings, one meeting, because these are the big ticket items? Because it's gonna take time to process these things and all that, that gives you the picture on it. So I think for now, why don't we experiment, let's try for, for the nineteenth, let's try nine o'clock, with a caveat. If we can't get past it, we gotta trust the fact that we can extend it or something. Let's just try that, let's, let's see if that works, and then, and then, and then, let's see how it flows, let's see how it flows.
Even though three of our board members do not agree with that, we should try it?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm saying right now, and now, you, you have to agree right now whether we're gonna do that or not. I'm just proposing right now, let's try that right now.
For the one meeting coming up.
For the one meeting, see how that flows.
Yeah, just as in a, as a, as a...
As an attempt.
Part of what I recall, actual research.
Because there's, because there's a bigger thing that we gotta consider, I go back to what I'm saying is, I, 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 the cadence of the meeting, this is all connected to what we're trying to accomplish in the year. Right, in the year, and I haven't, I, I haven't influenced that yet. I haven't had a chance to influence that yet. Once that's done, once that is done, we have the interims, we got negotiation issues, we got this, that, all those things, there's some things that I know we have to address immediately. There are some conversations about the, what I'm gonna need to engage the community with, that I need to present to the community and you all, for you, for you to give me a blessing on, because with that is gonna be some contracts, right? So, so when, when that occurs, it's gonna take time for processing, so I need to kind of put all that together. That would then determine how many, but, but for now, let's just say nineteenth doesn't work out, because there, there's a bunch of people here, and there's still pent up stuff, then we got to go back and revisit that, and knowing that three of you right now are not okay with that, I think the caveat here is, let's try nine o'clock with the, an agreement that if it, if it's too crazy, we got to go to ten o'clock, you know, and let's try that and see if it works, if it doesn't work, then we know it is a ten.
Dr. Drouet, we've mentioned quite a few times about the more than likely possibility of two meetings a month.
Yeah.
Is that something that would happen right away, is that, I mean, I know it's not a decision that's been made.
Yeah.
But, it sounds like that's something that, when we're looking at like the schedule of the meetings, it might happen sooner than later, so.
Yeah.
Limiting a meeting right now, the potential of having more than expected meetings from this on, we can still endure business, right?
Yeah.
Besides, I requested it as an ADA accommodation.
Right, right.
Yeah, in the, in the ideal world of board governance, Dr. Drouet would give you the board calendar, like in May, so you would have the whole schedule, because like he said, there are big things that the staff has to do, you know, requirements, you know, that type of thing. And then you would have it, and then the beauty of that is that you can modify, eh, as, you may not need to, you know, or, or one month you might need two in a, in a workshop, you know, that type, it gives you great flexibility, the beauty of the calendar ahead of time, is that you're in the driver's seat, based on what's happening out in the community, and so like Drouet, Dr. Drouet said, so.
So, let me, let me ask this question, just, just right now, uh, who would be opposed to two meetings, ou- out of the board, that is, who, who, starting this spring, so, at some point? Or, not, not that we have to determine where, when it starts now, who would be, who would be opposed to two meetings? If it ends, let's say, nine o'clock or something.
Looking at the structure, starting of time, are we going to still start at four, if we're going to two, maybe we can have a later start time, we don't need to start at four.
Dr. Stad, a good question, too, that, that would mean two, uh, closed sessions as well, right?
Yeah, it has to, we, we got to have closed session, otherwise we won't be able to do business.
Right.
I wouldn't maybe have negotiations if I don't want to have closed session. Right, so, and you know, that's a big ticket, a big ticket item right now.
So, they'd be the, they'd be the same start time?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it all depends on how.
It's, it's, it still stops, eh, eh, yeah, most, most, most meetings that I know start at four o'clock, and, and, at least at Santa Monica Mall, but we often end at a ten. We end at a ten, but then again, we don't have, uh, uh, there's some specific needs here.
It end at ten, so there are six hour meetings?
Yeah. Trust me, during COVID, we went to one o'clock, so, you know, it's, it's sometimes.
Once or twice a month?
Say it again?
Once or twice a month?
We will twice a month.
So, you do six hour meetings twice a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, and in Long Beach, closed session usually started at, um, three o'clock, um, and open session was at five, sometimes it would be three thirty or four, just depends on what was on the closed session docket, but everybody, uh, in Long Beach, the board members would go to their workshop, I mean, their committee's meetings ahead of time, on that day, that's how they structured it. But then, the board meeting went from roughly five, and, and usually, was done by six fifteen, and it was that type of, so now they go like to five to six forty-five.
Remember, our partner is just building trust of the community also, even though we are, you're in, we're discussing this, I don't know if anybody's going to watch the deliberation here, you know, they're still gonna, they're still gonna think somehow things aren't in place, so, we're going to do our best to try to educate people about the, the, the content in the, in the, in the, in the, in the agenda. For example, the staff is going to start passing some information that the community probably has not seen, that you probably have previously before. That should help a little bit, but I don't know if they're going to read through all that, and at the same time, I don't know if they're going to understand that stuff right now, because I don't know if you guys had discussions on some of that stuff. So, so, um, because it is, this stuff, and the staff is clear, they say, Ben, we, we, we adopted this budget, and these movements are based on approval of this budget a long time ago, but the committee doesn't really, it's not thematic enough for people to follow, you know, so sometimes, you know, so, it's like in the classroom, you got a six unit assignment, if students aren't following that, the, the first u- unit from, eh, week one to week three, we're all the way up to this point, none of this makes sense anyway, if they can't track, they can't track what, what happened here. So, this is a classroom, it's the same thing, so, um, so I guess my point is, um, my point is, is anybody object to two meetings if I was to kick it this, this, this spring? And to, to clear the clog, a clog of whatever clog exists out there.
The only thing I would, um, like for us to consider is, um, that two of us are teachers.
Well, yeah, yes, yes.
So, making it earlier than four, and I'm not sure, you can chime in.
Yeah.
I can.
Yeah, I, I get that part, yeah, I get that part, yeah.
That's the only thing.
Yeah.
I think my request would be, I, I mean, I'll speak for myself, but I want to accommodate the ADA.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and I, and I think that leaning on you to, to make these pieces work together, and make sure we can handle an agenda and get all our business done.
Yeah.
In a way, that's suitable for the board, I think that's.
And it's, it's an attempt right now, like I said, eh, eh, as, as you heard today, that there's nuances in between board meetings, to make it as efficient as possible.
Right.
And, and for you guys to be able to represent your constituents in a, in a fair way, and then, and then, eh, 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 it's going to be our challenge to try to get those, I don't have the infrastructure of parent groups and stuff like that, like I want yet, that's a part of the journey, and I think, um, there's going to have to be, I'm hoping, the staff and parents when I'm in front of them, they have to give us some grace that I'm working on some things, but don't, don't expect some of these things to just happen right away, without, because I, as you can see how difficult this is. Right, so, so somehow, some way, I got to use some of my goodwill that I have right now to try to tell people, trust me, it's going to come, but like, give us some time to, to, to get past some of this stuff. Because there is a lot more nuances in between that has to happen, for things to be as efficient as we want, and I just don't, we don't have the structure in place for those things.
Are there other items that people would like to see added there that we haven't talked about? One, one thing I mentioned, uh.
So, let me, let me back up, so, I'll, I'll be talking to staff about looking at it, but I may come to propose, not, not, probably around February, March, we can start two, you know, just based on what's on, on the, on the docket. And that, but for this upcoming meeting, because I'm trying to get us moved together here, for this upcoming meeting, we're going to try to, our best to end at nine o'clock, I think we can, based on what, what you see there. If we, if it's a clog, we'll make a decision at the diocese to move to ten o'clock.
I disagree with that, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, but we were told by council that we're in ADA compliance, we've asked what other, we've asked what other things we could do to try to make things better, and I don't agree with time limits, so I just want that on record, for me at least.
That's fantastic, the DOJ would love that.
I didn't say I didn't want to accommodate, I do want to accommodate, thank you.
This is, this is what consensus comes to, this is, this is where, remember, at the end of the day, um, I'm going to count and see where we are, and I'm going to do my best to try to, uh, let everybody know we're going to try to fix this thing, is, is what I'm asking for right here, so.
And, and, and I think what you've set up going for your next meeting is, is a good plan to say, our goal is X, but it may be Y. So, to say that, we're not putting a hard stop, but our goal is X, and, and, and again, Dr. Drouet is so right, is that it's really on staff to make sure that there's no clogs in the system, that it's efficient moving, and we're building the plan as we fly, you know, at the same time, which is okay, it's all good.
And just remember, I'm, I'm supporting the two views here, I'm not saying nine o'clock is a hard fast thing, I'm saying, if we're stuck, we're going to, we're going to make a decision at the diocese and say we're going to ten o'clock. So, I'm not saying, I'm not saying both, so, unless, unless people are thinking eleven o'clock was, it was a target, uh, uh, I, I thought I'm hearing ten o'clock is probably the target. And then, eh, if nineteenth could possibly be at ten o'clock, based on what I'm suggesting, or it can end at nine o'clock, is what I'm saying.
If it's nine oh five, that's a win, so, so, you know, it's all about movement in that direction, so that, you know, you guys are doing it right. But you, you had something, sorry, sir.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I had, I had another one, but just to kind of add to that, it might be worth looking at the, the take, the, the certain amount of breaks.
Yeah.
Maybe that'd be something we could implement.
Absolutely.
If we're going to, you know, trial that, might as well trial the breaks.
Exactly, exactly.
Good point.
Um, but, but the other thing I was going to say is a, more like parliamentary, uh, I don't, I don't, what would you call it, uh, parliamentary.
We use, modify all its rules.
Yeah, so, so like, uh, just one thing I, I think our, our board has done, and Dr. Stewart's told me that it hasn't always been this way, but, uh, being a little bit more formal with the way we address, uh, our board members and, and hold discussions, madam president, my fellow, uh, board member, uh, Stuart, like, bringing that more into our culture, is going to be, uh, I think beneficial.
You're, you're so right, I mean, that, that is so important, it's setting the tone, it's about respect, it's about governance, and you're, you're exactly right.
Okay. Uh, yeah, yeah, are, are, are you saying that we should start that this, this time around, or should we train everybody how to do it first?
I, I think, I think, uh, it, I, I would say it's probably was the norm at some point, so I don't know if it's something we need to like reboot, you know, like, uh,
Okay.
But, something that we can all agree on, as far as, uh, rules of engagement.
So, let's do it this way, I know there's some bylaws that I'm going to be bringing, not this board meeting, but the, on the, on the February board meeting, bylaws on the, that's, civic gate, you know, what's, what's the term?
Conduct.
Yeah, yeah, so, conduct, yeah, I'm thinking we can possibly include that in that conversation. I'm going to ask for a subcommittee of you two to help me navigate that, this, before the next board meeting, so maybe, uh, I'll pick, maybe I'll pick some, some of you here, or, or you guys help me select which two we can navigate through that, so, so, we meet in my office, we can debate, debate all that, and then come up with a recommendation for the rest of the board, for the following board meeting.
Great.
How's that?
Great.
Okay, so let's include that in our piece there.
That's, thank you, so let's look at the, the staff norms for board meetings, are there any other that, that folks cannot live with, say that they're not good?
I have a question, on the second one, were we supposed to choose whether we wanted them during or after, was that like?
Uh, let me see, indicate, I'm, I'm getting my glasses off here, sorry. Eyes are horrible nowadays. Okay, so that's a, uh, that's, uh, uh.
We took it as you wanted us to pick one or the other.
Yeah, you pick, yeah, I just think, uh, during the presentation, we're going to ask, do you want us to, do you guys want to ask questions now or after? You know, kind of a thing, so some people like it after, so that way you hear the deliberation first, and then, some people, yeah, I want to ask some questions now.
Yeah, it depends on the presentation.
Yeah.
Correct.
Depends on the presentation.
And amount of information being presented.
Yeah, I think, you know, a good norm has been that most people would say, please hold the questions however, if there's one, eh, I just think you need that flexibility, and for staff to know too, that if a board member has a, a point, we have to address that, that question.
Yeah, so, eh, eh, it can, it can lead us to answer something we might not have considered, because you, you can be out there constituency, eh, eh, hey, I wanted to ask some questions, before you go, you might be able to hit it while you were talking about it. Yeah, I can see that kind of a situation, so, that way, that way, you know, I've seen situations where community doesn't understand what we're doing sometimes. So, those questions asked, help us prepare in our presentation to talk about something that we probably will not consider, because we didn't consider it. So, I could, so, so if you leave that flexibility allows for that, so that way, um, we don't, it actually helps, sometimes, um, eh, eh, it can help dissuade some people coming up with some questions ahead of you doing, you know, it can stop them, oh, we already addressed that question you were asking, and then all of a sudden, you keep going. That make sense, or?
Yes, yeah.
Anything that people want to add, that, um, that they think is critical to be more efficient on, on this side of, on the list?
The process on how board members can agendaize items, I think that that would be a good add.
I'm sorry, could you say?
The process on how board members can agendaize items.